Madam Clerk, are we all set to go?
Yes, Mayor, we are live now.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Let me go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let me reconvene the regular open session of the San Ana City Council Meeting for February 1st, 2022. Happy February. Chúc mừng mới. Happy New Year, Happy Lunar New Year to everybody. Black History Month this month as well, so a lot going on in February. We're off to a great start. I want to go ahead and just make a few opening housekeeping remarks and remind you that this meeting is taking place with in-person attendance and by teleconference via Zoom. The public can access this meeting via the San Ana YouTube channel and the city's website. And as always, please bear with us as our technology may disrupt the meeting. Let me go ahead and turn it over to the Clerk so she can call roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hernandez?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez? Councilmember Mendoza?
Present.
Councilmember Peñalosa?
Here.
Councilmember Phan?
Here.
Mayor Protem Becerra?
Here.
And Mayor Sarmiento?
Here. Thank you. Let me just go ahead and remind everybody that we have a public hearing, item number 16, which is on redistricting. By law, we're going to call that out of order no matter where we are. That'll be at 7 o'clock, so it's approximately 15:15. I still have an analog watch. It still works, so we're close. But as soon as we hit 7, whatever we do, we're going to have to interrupt that and begin our redistricting public hearing. So let me go ahead and before we begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I know I'm going to be making a comment regarding a closed session item that Councilmember Phan recused herself on. I'll go ahead and have her recite that before we go into the rest of the business calendar. But Madam Clerk, go ahead and make your opening remarks as well.
Thank you, Mayor. To request to speak on any agenda or non-agenda items within the city's jurisdiction, with the exception of public hearing items 16, 17, and 18, please dial *9 from your phone or click on the button labeled Raise Hand from Zoom at this time. Please hold your comments until the mayor opens the public hearing items 16, 17, and 18. Please announce your name and ward or neighborhood you reside in within the city of Santa Ana for the record. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Phan, do you want to recite your recusal of one of the closed session items?
I was recused, or I have recused myself from closed session item number three regarding the Carnegie Shelter. As the property owner, Dyer 18 LLC is a client of my employer, the law firm, Rutan &amp; Tucker. I arrived late, so I was not able to state this recusal prior to the closed session, but I was not in the room while it was discussed. Thank you.
Thank you for putting that on the record. Let me go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Peñalosa to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you'll still, if you'll remain standing as we receive our words of inspiration from Dr. Willie Holmes after.
Thank you, Mayor. It would be an honor if you could please rise and join me in facing our flag and placing your right hand over your heart and follow along. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not sure if Dr. Holmes is with us. Is he on virtually or is he here in person?
He was running a little behind schedule. I'm not sure if he's here yet.
All right. Should we wait till he arrives? We can always do that afterwards?
Yes, thank you.
Is that okay with everybody? Go ahead, everybody. Take a seat. Let's go ahead and move along with the balance of the calendar. So let me go ahead and turn it over to Mayor Protem Becerra, who's going to be presenting a certificate of recognition to our Public Works Agency, our Parks and Recs, and our community services for the Winter Village. So go ahead, Mayor Protem.
So good evening, everybody. I couldn't be more happier to be up here doing this tonight because this is such a wonderful experience for our city. As many of you know, from December 8th to January 2nd, the city of Santa Ana hosted the Winter Village right in the Plaza of Flags in our civic center in the heart of the county. It was quite a change from what we saw there previously for, I'd say, a couple of years ago. It was a dramatic transformation. What we saw were residents and visitors from all over, especially those here in Santa Ana that were coming out and testing their skills on a world-class ice rink. Sure, sure, sure. How's that? All right, perfect. So one thing that I really appreciated when I was out there on the rink was there were so many first-time skaters, and most of them were from right here in Santa Ana. We are providing that opportunity to come to our civic center and enjoy something that residents in other parts of the county and other parts of the country frankly are able to do. So approximately out of 11,000 tickets sold, almost half of them were purchased from Santa Ana residents. So I think that's an amazing statistic. The Winter Village wasn't just the ice rink. It had plenty of other things to offer. It had a trackless train, live entertainment. For those of you who are skating, you heard many local bands that were performing. You saw cuisine from local food trucks, and especially a little shout out to our folks at Friday Night Munchies who come out there on the plaza, I thought. They just did an amazing job just collaborating and putting all that together. The community event was presented by the city of Santa Ana as part of the city's revive funding that we got through the Federal American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. The rink contractor was ICE America, and they indicated that they had a great time working with our community, and we appreciate the work that they did for us as well. Today, what I wanted to do, I wanted to take this opportunity. I was so happy to see what happened and see the community coming together. I wanted to make sure that we showed our appreciation to those who helped make that happen. So what I wanted to do was recognize ICE America and all the city staff. And it's not just a couple. There are so many that were a part of this. But what I'd like to do is call up from the Public Works Agency, Robert Gonzalez, Yasmin Vasquez, from Parks and Recs, Sonia Batris, and Kevin Eaton, and then from CDA, I see Julie Castro Cardenas come on up, and then Scott Williams from ICE America. If you're here, please come on up. So while they're coming up here, I just want to say, you know, if it wasn't for their dedicated efforts, all these folks, both our staff members and ICE America, this would not have been possible. So, you know, there's a rumor we may have a short meeting. I'm going to extend it by a couple of minutes because I'm going to run through really super quick. And I want to, because I think it's such an important accomplishment what we had, I want to run through real quick and just go through the names of those that really helped make this possible. As I mentioned, Scott Williams from ICE America, Julie Castro Cardenas from Parks, we had Javier Avalos, Wayne Baker, Sonia Batris, Matthew Bosflug, Ali Borajardi, Julio Casares, Kevin Eaton, Juan Garcia, Robert Garcia, Eric Hernandez, Chuck Kinsuke, Enrique Laguna, Juan Lopez, Paul Murphy, Michael Swingholm, Caesar Terran. From Public Works, we had Gabriel Avina, Eduardo Belmonte, DeShannon Braswell, Joseph Brown, Mario Camarina, David Carbalha, David Carbalha Jr., Ruben Cornejo, David Correa, Nick Delatorre, Danny DeLeon, Juan El Dunn, Miguel Escalona, Zeke Garcia, Lee Garrett, Kyle Gillespie, Robert Gonzalez, Brandon Gray, Luzanna Guian, Andrew Hyer, Keith Knudsen, Vince Lopez, Paul Madrid, Andre Montano, Octavio Montez, Edgar Montoya, Armando Morales, Antonio Munoz, Jorge Navarro, Thomas Nunez, Jaime Peña, Ryan Pallado, Ivan Keones, Philip Ramirez, Victor Ramirez, Miguel Renteria, Enrique Reynoso, Magdalena Rodriguez, Jose Roman, Adrian Salas, Eric Sanchez, Luis Solis Carlos Trais, Elliot Valdez, Andy Varia, Jonathan Vargas, and last but certainly not least, Yasmin Vasquez. So I apologize if I butchered anybody's name, but I just wanted to make sure I recognized everybody. So thank you. Is Paul here? Can we snap a quick photo? Yeah, let's do that. Before you guys run, I just want to, I want to ask for the folks that are here in the audience that I read your name off correctly or incorrectly. If you guys wouldn't mind standing up and just be recognized, please. Thank you each and every one of you, and thank you to those of you who are here in the audience tonight, and thank you.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. And thank you to all of our city family that does so much, not just at, you know, special events like the Winter Village, but all year long, every day, you know, 24/7. Thank you all for your service to us. We have one more presentation that Councilmember Phan is going to do, recognizing, you know, the Lunar New Year. But I know that Dr. Holmes just arrived, so I'm not sure if, Councilmember, why don't we go ahead and allow Dr. Holmes to provide us his words of inspiration, and we'll go ahead and go to your presentation right afterwards. So if everybody will please listen to Dr. Holmes.
Thank you, Council. Holy One known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of Life, Spirit of Love, Spirit of Community, Spirit of Justice, we ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first, "How do we fix this?", but "How do we need to learn? How might we need to change, and how do we need to listen?" Remind them because of we all forgot from time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders but also servants, and that is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, every one gay, straight, transgender, black, or white Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh, or atheist is our neighbor, our sibling, and throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of these peoples to respect and protect the least of them among us. Our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten, grant them and us the wisdom and the courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May they and we speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively. Always, and so may they and we always be guided by the Spirit of Community, by the Spirit of Justice, and by the Spirit of Love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. May it be so. Amen.
Thank you so much for those beautiful words, Dr. Holmes. Thank you for joining us. Let me go ahead and now turn it over to Councilmember Phan, who's going to be presenting a proclamation declaring February 1st as the Tet Lunar New Year. So, Councilmember? And by the way, we were at a temple last night, the Huy Quang Temple, and it was a beautiful ceremony. A lot of people were there, but everybody was masked, as I could tell, but just having a great time. So thank you so much for this proclamation, Councilmember.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. So I'm very excited, as the first Vietnamese-American to sit on this dais, to proclaim February 1st, 2022, as Lunar New Year, also called Tet in Vietnamese. So it's typically celebrated on the second new moon after the winter solstice, and that can fall anytime between late January and the middle of February on the solar calendar. If you're like me, I just Google Lunar New Year after Christmas, and it'll tell you. According to traditions in many Asian cultures, including Vietnamese culture, February 1st, 2022 marks the first day of Lunar New Year, 4/7/20, and this is the Year of the Tiger. People born in the Year of the Tiger are known to be charming, confident, and full of valor. Today, we want to present Hope Community Services with this proclamation and recognize them for their contributions to the Vietnamese-American community. Hope Community Services is a nonprofit organization located right here in the city of Santa Ana and founded in 1995 with the mission of serving Vietnamese refugees and immigrants facing hardships related to migration and integration and preserving Vietnamese heritage and culture. Hope Community Services has expanded its service to include providing culturally responsive education, training, and referrals related to COVID-19. Here to accept the recognition on behalf of Hope Community Services is Katie Jung. Please come up, Katie. Thank you, Katie, for joining us today and for all that you and Hope Community Services do for the Vietnamese community in Santa Ana. So now, therefore, the city of Santa Ana declares February 1st, 2022, as Tet, or Lunar New Year, and encourages all residents to celebrate the richness of the cultural heritage within our community and recognize the valuable contributions of the Asian-Americans in our city. We wish you all happiness, longevity, and good fortune, and hope everyone celebrates the Year of the Tiger. Chúc mừng mới. Would you like to say, would you like to say a couple of words? And I'd actually love to invite our Vietnamese community liaison, Tina Doa Lee, as she was the one who helped connect me to Hope Community Services, and hopefully everybody can recognize the services they provide, both in our city and with nonprofits in our city.
First, I would like to say Chúc mừng mới, which is Happy New Year in Vietnamese. It's just such an honor to be here and to be recognized as a part of the city of Santa Ana. I have served here the last four years, and we have served more than just the Vietnamese community. And it's just such a great community to be in with such diversity, such beauty, and such inclusion. And I'm just so excited to continue working in this community and making it better and more inclusive and more diverse for each and every of the Santa Ana resident. And once again, thank you so much for this honor, and I'm just glad to be here and represent my culture and my Vietnamese Aoi, and hope you guys will also celebrate Aotep as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that presentation, Councilmember Phan, and thank you for receiving that. It's such a special time in our city's, you know, city's life. I know that, you know, a lot of people forget that, you know, Little Saigon was born here in Santa Ana. And so we have been home to, you know, the proud home of many Vietnamese-American families from the very beginning, from, you know, the 19, early 1970s. And that's a proud legacy that we continue on, and we want to thank the Councilmember for proclaiming today the Lunar New Year. So let me go ahead and turn it over to staff for their first presentation. I understand that the presentation by the AQMD is going to be continued to some future date, but we have two other presentations that they're going to give us update, an update on. So I'll turn it over to the city manager to give us our homelessness update.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. This is our third reoccurring monthly update on homelessness and homeless services provided by the city of Santa Ana. As an engaged partner, the city of Santa Ana remains at the forefront of addressing this issue using all tools possible. And you'll see I have joining me Mr. Ken Gominski, who we brought in to specifically oversee our new expanded efforts in this area. He's going to, are you as good as Daniel? Do you know how to load the presentation, Ken? So overview of what we want to talk to you about tonight. We want to update you on the Quality of Life team activities and highlights. We want to talk about our new SMART team, and we want to tell you about the date for the county of Orange Point in Time, which was delayed from January, and then cover ongoing homeless services provided by the city, as well as give you an update on the construction of our permanent Carnegie Shelter. With that, I am going to turn it over to Ken Gominski, and he is going to handle the Quality of Life team highlights, and also introduce to you the city NET SMART team who are in the audience tonight. Okay, it's all you, Ken.
Thank you, Madam City Manager, and thank you, city council. Our Quality of Life team, also known as COLT, remains active and engaged in all areas within the city. By looking at this slide, you'll see that in December, our Quality of Life team continued its daily coordinated responses throughout the entire city. During December, COLT contacted 251 individuals currently experiencing homelessness, providing outreach services as well as enforcement action when necessary. 307 individual cleanups of various sizes occurred. These cleanups are generally larger in scale and require more time to perform than the routine Public Works responses. COLT also issued 61 arrests or citations for various misdemeanor offenses, and placed or assisted into some form of shelter 69 individuals. Some of the highlights for January. A multi-agency outreach and cleanup event occurred last month in cooperation with CHP, Orange Police Department, Caltrans, the Orange County Healthcare Agency, and our partner, CityNet. The team started off, started off the morning at Hart Park, where several individuals were contacted, but only one accepted shelter. The team then moved into the Santiago Creek area, underneath the 22 freeway, and under the train tracks, where Caltrans and Santa Ana City crews cleaned the area of any abandoned property and graffiti with the support of the California Highway Patrol. The team then moved further and found large encampments located under the Broadway and 5 freeway bridge overpasses. 12 individuals were arrested, and an additional 23 individuals were contacted by CityNet and again offered services. The individuals that we contacted on that morning were very similar to the majority of the individuals. We continued to contact daily, and we found the population to be service-resistant. However, with our partner, CityNet, they have continued with case management resources to try to move that resistant population towards some type of shelter. Starting January 19th, Union Pacific Railroad cleanups began being performed throughout the city five days a week, Monday through Friday, beginning in the early morning hours. When individuals exit railroad property, generally, they're allowed to sit and remain on the railroad, or on the city property until the railroad cleanup is done. During these cleanups, we're using that opportunity for our outreach partners and our COLT team to engage all of these individuals. It's the intent of this program that individuals choosing to reside on the railroad tracks are again educated to the illegality of this concept, they are offered services, and crimes discovered or observed are addressed. These individuals will have an opportunity to engage with COLT personnel and trauma-informed specialists on a daily basis, not just the three to five times a month that UP generally comes out. These individuals are given an opportunity to either engage in services, to accept help, or to choose other places to reside. This is an attempt to turn the corner on this specific issue, which has plagued the city for many, many years. When this program started, it was taking cleanup crews all day to simply address portions of the total railroad property. As of this morning, I'm happy to report, the entire railroad property, everything within the city covered by Union Pacific, had been cleared and cleaned in less than three hours. Lastly of note, the Honorable Judge Carter has been busy visiting sites in Santa Ana, including East First Street, the railroads, the Carnegie Homeless and Navigation Shelter Center. Judge Carter expressed his appreciation to the contractor, Jeffrey Ogolnick, who continues to work tirelessly to bring that homeless navigation center to reality. Carter also was impressed, as we spoke at length, about the size and scope of what that shelter will mean, not just for Santa Ana itself, but for the individuals that choose to seek shelter there, based on the amount of service providers that will be, will have access to that site. SMART. Santa Ana began its enhanced partnership with CityNet on December 1st. Santa Ana's newly-formed SMART program, Santa Ana's Multidisciplinary Response Teams, is a pilot program between the city of Santa Ana and CityNet. The program is our newest effort to provide trauma-informed care services to address homelessness within the city. Santa Ana has had a strong and successful relationship with CityNet for several years, and it is through this program that the city expects to expand and enhance outreach efforts. Reports into the My Santa Ana app and a community call line go directly to teams in the field. The goal of SMART is to provide more effective outreach and engagement while better utilizing city resources through a diversion of homeless calls from the Santa Ana Police Department and Orange County Fire Authority. COLT, along with Code Enforcement and Public Works, stand ready to assist on any homeless calls where additional support is needed by our partner, CityNet. This frees up law enforcement to focus on calls for, calls for, that require public safety responses or involve some type of criminal activity. SMART will address all non-emergency homeless calls in an effort to increase outreach focused on providing services, addressing mental health, and helping more individuals transition out of homelessness. As you'll see on the screen, this is an example of a report the city reads, receives monthly, and this is a total outline of all activity the SMART teams have performed from December 1st, December 1st, its inception, through January 24th, 2020. The information provided clearly shows that our SMART teams are operating throughout the entire city based on calls for service. SMART has responded, responded to 859 dispatched calls from CityNet's dispatch center. 171 of those calls have been diverted from either the Santa Ana Police Department or the Orange County Fire Authority. 146 were self-initiated proactive contacts created by SMART. 31 were reported via the My Santa Ana app, and a total of 5 were reported via the MySantaAna app, and a total of 511 calls were received from the community at large. In addition, SMART had 773 contacts with individuals experiencing homelessness. Their case managers are currently engaged with 253 individuals providing that service. They have exited 102 individuals off the streets of Santa Ana, and have provided 34 COVID responses from their teams.
Hey, Ken, can I just interrupt you really quickly?
Yes.
Going back to Slide 9 on that sort of heat map and where the calls seem to be coming from and the concentration of effort and work. Is that, you know, it looks like it's running east-west along First and Fourth Street. Is that what it looks like to me? I can almost see my house from here.
So...
So, is there like a corridor or something that's drawing the concentration of those two arterials?
So, sir, what you're seeing is First Street and Fourth Street along the east and west, and then Seventeenth Street on the north. Those are the highest concentrations of homeless-related calls for service to the SMART team, and I would be willing to bet the highest calls for service to both police and fire agencies as well. Running north, that street running north is Main Street.
Right. And is it a busy corridor for any particular reason, or is it just because those two... You know, one of the theories I know somebody had mentioned to me was that there's some sheet metal salvage yards, sort of, you know, a little north of Fourth Street, and a lot of, you know, folks experiencing homelessness will find something that they can turn in and receive some, you know, recyclable, you know, monies for that, and so, you know, maybe that's the draw. Is that... Or do we have any theories on that?
Mayor, First Street will continue to be a problem, I believe, as we work with our code enforcement partner on certain different types of businesses that may be increasing the negative impacts of homelessness on our community, as well as Fourth Street. The issue with the recycling centers...
It's the motels.
The motels.
Yeah.
The issues that you're discussing with the recycling centers, Santa Ana is uniquely accepts a multitude of different types of recyclable materials. In my discussions with the homeless population, we will accept recyclable materials that many other cities don't allow. As such, it's not unusual to find individuals currently experiencing homelessness stripping the plastic off of copper wire outside of these recycling centers before they will then take the recyclable inside and leave the trash out and about. It is not uncommon for individuals currently experiencing homelessness to utilize scavenging to come up with items for recycling. And so, you will see an increase in the amount of calls for service and activity generally around our recycling center, sir.
Got it. Thank you for that. Thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity, if I could have the individuals stand up when I call your name. I'll be introducing some of the individuals that are responsible for the current successes of our SMART teams in Santa Ana. Brad Fieldhouse, who is the President and Executive Director of CityNet, Yoli Negrete, and Meg Munoz. They're regional program supervisors for our SMART team. I have an opportunity to work with these outstanding ladies almost every day. Our city could not be any better served than by these fine supervisors. We also have Amy Hurtado, who is our lead case manager. She routinely works day in and day out with not the immediate responses to homelessness, but going back over and over trying to get individuals to get document ready, to go to their appointments, to take them places so that we can move them out of their current status. We also have Natalie Malouf and Kiara Gray, who are both case managers and involved in outreach and engagement. When our residents call the SMART team, they're getting these professionals that will respond to their calls for service, that they will... And we can be sure that when the SMART team responds on the city's behalf, they are offering trauma-informed care and services to individuals currently experiencing homelessness. I am so incredibly proud to have an opportunity to work with this fine staff, because they truly do an absolutely amazing job in incredibly difficult circumstances.
Thank you all very much for being recognized and for, more importantly, doing what you do, and, you know, what you're going to be continuing to do for the residents of Santa Ana. Thank you all very much.
I'd like to turn it back over to the City Manager now.
Okay, Mayor, I know you're on a timetable. I think I can get this wrapped up by 7 o'clock. So, next, just briefly, want to talk about the Point-in-Time Count. As you know, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development does this biannually, and it was delayed from January, but the County of Orange and the Orange County Continuum of Care will conduct the sheltered count the night of Monday, February 21st, and the unsheltered count starting the morning of Tuesday, the 22nd, through Thursday, the 24th. The City of Santa Ana's count will be held on Tuesday, the 22nd. Some benefits of the Point-in-Time Count, it provides the public the opportunity to get involved. It's the opportunity to reconcile and update the Veterans Registry, and brings us one step closer to ending veteran homelessness. And it's also an opportunity to count families and transitional age youth experiencing homelessness. For those of you that are interested in volunteering, they do need a lot of volunteers to pull off this Point-in-Time Count. There is training for the volunteers. Anyone that's interested, you can go to the website www.everyonecountsoc.org, and the preliminary Point-in-Time Count results will be available in April, with the finalized city-specific information available by June. For the volunteers, they need 400 for the February 22nd count, and each team member will be equipped with an identifiable count t-shirt, a branded Everyone Counts OC tote bag with snack kits and survey incentives for survey participants. The organizations involved in this effort will be led by the Orange County Community Resources Agency, and will be supported by CityNet, 211, and numerous other nonprofits and volunteer organizations. In addition, 34 city agencies from across the county, law enforcement, OC Public Works, and independent community volunteers will play very important roles. Volunteers are required to show proof of COVID vaccination or a negative PCR test within 48 hours of their scheduled volunteer shift. Next, I would just want to talk briefly about the... We know the impacts homeless has on the quality of life, and through collaboration and coordination, I'm very proud of what we have done. So briefly, I want to talk about just the shelter and housing. Santa Ana remains at the forefront of providing housing options for individuals experiencing homelessness. Currently, the city is utilizing the Salvation Army Hospitality House, an interim family motel program, and the Link on Commonwealth to provide emergency shelter, beds with wraparound services until our Homeless Navigation Center at Carnegie is opened. In total, we have provided shelter beds for 499 persons currently experiencing homelessness in 2021. And today, the Salvation Army Hospitality House has 65 residents, leaving 10 beds open. The Carnegie Center remains in construction and will be opening this month. And as a further demonstration of our commitment to the homeless crisis, we're proud of the 227 permanent supportive housing units completed and located within five different sites in our city. And an additional 207 units are currently pre-development or under construction at five additional locations. So, in total, the city will very soon have 437 permanent supportive housing units. In addition to that, having our own housing authority, we currently have vouchers that we set aside specifically for individuals experiencing homelessness, and to date, 422 vouchers have been issued. Let's talk about the Navigation Center. We have some additional updates. You can see from the picture, it looks quite differently than the picture that you saw at the last homeless update. Flooring, painting, lighting, and tiling is currently underway inside the shelter. Outside the building, a lot of improvements are taking place, and staff continues to work tirelessly to keep the construction moving forward, also assisting the contractor with various permits, and also issues with Southern California Edison. By mid-month, we hope to begin moving the furnishings and equipment into the building, and then, as we prepare and transport to afford the new shelter, to receive 115 guests who are currently at our other shelters. If you have any questions, Ken and I are available, and I think I've left you two minutes, Mayor.
Made it right under the wire. Thank you for that presentation. I appreciate it, and thank you. Let me go ahead and bring it back to the council, see if there's any questions or comments, being aware that we have two minutes before we start our redistricting public hearing. Councilmember Beniallo.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento, and thank you, Mr. Gominski and Madam City Manager, for that presentation and update. I do want to ask a couple things, because I know that we keep referencing to individuals experiencing homelessness, but as a lifelong resident of the city and driving around daily, this is more than just individuals experiencing homelessness. This is a lot of individuals experiencing mental illness and severe, severe drug addiction. I could tell you right now that the reason why we see a concentration of homeless individuals along First Street is the Methadone Clinic, for one, and the half a dozen rundown motels that we allow to just run wild with no checks or balances. I don't know how they get an operational license, given the amount of calls that we get for those areas along First Street, which are very problematic. And what I want to ask is, you mentioned that at Hart Park, when we did the sweep, there was, I forget the number of individuals you came in contact with, only one accepted service.
I believe the number I gave was 23, and we were only one person sought shelter.
So, what happened to the other 22?
Seven were arrested, and the remainder were left if they were not violating the law. The park was open.
So, but they were... Were they not, I guess, encamping in a public park?
So, when we started at Hart Park and moved our way all the way down the creek bed, it's unlawful to reside or camp out or be... to be under some of the bridges. Those are violations of law. Those people were issued citations. People that had warrants were arrested and taken. But if we found people that were just in the park or in the creek that were not violating a law, they were offered services, and we moved on from there.
Okay. So, and I'll try to wrap up in the next minute, because I know we were... But, you know, I also want to make sure that our community hears and understands, because this is the biggest and most critical issue that our residents ask me a dozen times a day today. In Henninger Park, we were dealing with this. If you recall, I want to call you Deputy Chief Gominski, that was your last title. When we did that ride-along early last year, we drove down First Street, and I remember that there was about... We came across a crowd of about 12 individuals by one of the motels, and a young woman had a bag of fentanyl in her panty line. And she took it out, and she was high, out of her mind, and all her friends were as well. And so, what... How do we address that? How do we keep that? Because that concentration on First Street, I can guarantee anybody listening, that it is not just people experiencing homelessness, it is people experiencing severe, severe drug addiction, breaking the law, and participating in criminal activity. So, how do we keep that from happening along that street? I mean, what kind of continued... Because I don't think that... And thank you so much to the CityNet individuals that are here, that are offering resources, but a lot of those people are not going to, you know, want to even talk to our CityNet personnel, because they're not just experiencing homelessness.
Quickly.
Quickly.
I would answer that in saying this, sir. I've had several ongoing discussions with the Chief of Police about what drug activity along East First Street looks like, and the Chief is completely engaged in trying to come up with some long-term solutions for that problem. Additionally, I have had several conversations with Alvaro Nunez, who oversees code enforcement as part of the Planning and Building Department, and there are discussions as to what long-term solutions along that corridor can look like.
Thank you for that, and I just want to also emphasize that it's not specific to that corridor. It's Main Street, it's Bristol, it's Edinger, it's Fairview, it's Harbor. I mean, it is a just sad, sad situation happening on our streets, because it's not... You know, they are severely addicted to drugs and suffering from mental illness and doing anything they can to get that next fix. Breaking into people's homes, breaking into people's cars, sealing catalytic converters, I mean, you name it. It is a huge epidemic that is, our residents are paying the price for it. And it's just unfortunate to get call after call after call regarding this issue and running out of things to say, because it just seems like it never ends. So, I appreciate it. Thank you so much to everyone involved, but let's make sure that we get these at least monthly reports, and time them after the public hearings, because it is the number one important issue in the city our residents are asking for, and to quickly run through it, because we have a public hearing, is also not appropriate. But thank you. Thank you both.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that presentation. Thank you for the question. What I want to do is, we're now going to interrupt the meeting to go to our public hearing on redistricting. But I do, Madam Clerk, and with the indulgence of my colleagues and staff and public, I want to keep ourselves at three minutes, so please time us. The public has three minutes to speak. I'd like us up here to respect that, unless there's some overwhelming reason why we can't. I don't want us to continue restating the obvious. We know things are problematic, and let's try to get to some solutions as opposed to, you know, talking about what the concern is. What I would suggest for the next homelessness update, Madam City Manager and Madam City Attorney, if you'll please give us some guidelines as to what legally we can do, because I think there's confusion about what we can and what we can't do, and we are bound by law. You can't arrest somebody for being poor. You can't arrest somebody for not having a home. You can certainly arrest somebody for trespassing, for doing something illegal, but we have to separate the two. I don't want us to speak in convoluted statements or overly broad comments. I want us to be specific as what the law allows not only our officers, but our team, our civilian team, to do. So, that clarity would be helpful at the next presentation. So, let me go ahead and move, interrupt the...
Mayor, Councilmember Hernandez has his hand virtually raised.
Go ahead, Councilmember, briefly, because we're backed up now.
Absolutely. I just wanted to say thank you, Mr. Mayor. You're absolutely right. When communities of color struggle with addiction, they go to prison. When affluent communities struggle with addiction, they go to rehab. We need to shift how we respond to people in crisis and people that need our help and assistance.
Thank you for that comment. Let me go ahead and now take us to item number 16, which is the public hearing, the sixth public hearing on redistricting ward boundaries. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing formally, so we could go ahead and address that. I know we have a presentation from our consultant, Paul Mitchell. Paul, I'm going to... I think you're on the line. I thought I saw your face in one of the inserts here on the image. I'm just going to ask if you can spare us with a lot of the, you know, slides and presentation that we've already had, and if we can kind of go to the meat of the presentation. I think this is the sixth presentation, so we don't need to have a recitation of what the Fair Maps Act requires. I think all of us up here and the public has had that several times. If you can do it briefly and get us to where we need to get to on the slides and the maps, that'd be helpful. And again, Madam Clerk, if you'll please time us as well when we respond.
Okay, and then, Paul, you should be able to share your screen, unless you want me to...
I need to still set that up, but let me try now. There we go. Thank you. Thank you very much, and I will try to shorten this down to be aware of time. Thank you very much, and I will try to shorten this down to be aware of time and also the fact that this is, like you mentioned, the sixth hearing. And those who were here just a couple of years ago, we had probably six or more hearings on the same issues back then as well. So I'm sure that you and a lot of the council members and people who come regularly to these meetings have become as much of an expert as I am in these issues now. I'll cover some of these issues about redistricting, then we'll go straight into draft maps that have been submitted, and then go into kind of what are the next steps and get feedback from the public, and then feedback from you as we keep moving along in this process. So, the Fair Maps Act, just because there's 41 people online who maybe some of them don't know, they can go back to prior hearings and look at some of our longer, more detailed discussion about these issues. But there are criteria we have to follow in the redistricting process. We can't just willy-nilly draw districts. We need to make sure that they're relatively equal size, that they're contiguous. We need to try to do what we can to make sure that they are protecting communities of interest. We need to work around existing neighborhood boundaries or other governmental agency boundaries that the district, that the city might find helpful. As an example, in the original redistricting work we did in 2018, we used some school district boundaries, regarding the unified school district boundary, as a way to help drive some of the lines. And then keeping districts compact, which I can describe if people have questions, but there's a little bit of a new definition on that. We are working with census data, but we're not just working with one census data set. Most people who know something about redistricting know that it happens every 10 years, because that's when the census comes out. But the census isn't one monolithic thing. The census also includes a second data set we use a lot in redistricting called the American Community Survey. It is kind of the color to the census. The census short question doesn't ask, are you a renter or homeowner? It doesn't ask citizenship. It doesn't ask, how long is your commute to work? But the longer American Community Survey does get a lot of that information, and some of that is what we use in the redistricting process. So whenever we talk about census, we'll probably slip into talking mostly about the decennial census, but sometimes that data also is coming from long-term surveys like the American Community Survey. One of the challenges in redistricting in this decade that's different than in past decades is that it is not a process of, you know, hiring a demographer, going and figuring out what all the elected officials want, and then just delivering a map and being done with it. There's a process of community engagement, of making sure that the public has an opportunity to give input. And then taking that input, trying to make it fit within those requirements of the law, and then get the council to a place where it can adopt a map that has benefited from that public engagement. And all of the decisions about lines, where lines go, conversations about communities, all of that is happening in open public hearings like this one. Whenever we get to new lines, we also make sure that they're on the city's website, that they're public, and no maps can be actually passed by the city that haven't been public for seven days, so the public has an idea of what is the mapping plan that will ultimately be adopted and how to give input. One of the things that we did in this redistricting that we didn't do much of in the last redistricting is really utilize the power of these online tools. We use a program called Districter that's been used around the country to get public submissions, and we've gotten a lot of these publicly drawn plans. When we get a publicly drawn plan, we make sure that it gets the same treatment as any plan that's created. One that we create will get the same treatment as one that, you know, John Smith or Alice Rodriguez creates. It will get a map with a cover page showing all of the boundaries within the full jurisdiction of the city of Santa Ana. It'll get a data table with data from two different census data sets to allow the public to see that and compare it to other plans. And then it'll give you individual district page layouts to be able to look more closely at a potential district. In addition, different than last time, we now have these web maps. These web maps allow any map that's made by us or by the public to be viewed, zoomed in, look at the street level, and see exactly where those lines are dividing each of the districts. Now, we got a lot of public map submissions, some of which fell into kind of themes. There were community of interest maps, where people just said, this is my area of renters, let's say. There were some maps that just created non-contiguous or, you know, more creative maps that might not follow the state law. There were others that created multiple districts around the central wards. Following major streets was a theme. There were also a series of maps from VietRise identifying potential districts from that community. So the current lines that have been in place, used for the 2020 elections, but still, these lines are kind of still in their infancy. Not all these district lines have been utilized yet in an election, because the lines took effect after the 2018 election cycle. So these current lines are based on that last redistricting that, again, public hearings, community input, and so on. Now, the challenge is that those lines were passed based on the 2010 census. We now are in the 2020 census data, seeing a total population deviation here of 13.4%. Districts don't have to all be the same size, but they have to be within 10% of each other. So we're going to strive to try to reduce that deviation as a part of the process of reviewing these lines and getting to new, new maps. So, first, we developed some maps that were A, A2, D, and E. Note that when I show you these, the wards are going to be done as letters, not numbers. Each of these maps is within a 10% deviation. Then we created more. Some of these were from public submissions. When they were from a public submission, we actually still identify that submission number, so that we're aware and can look back at Districter to see what plan that was. Each of those is also within a 10% total plan deviation. I'll flip through these quickly, because we've discussed these already at length. And if you wanted to go see more information about these plans, the prior hearing recordings are definitely available. We have Plan A, and with each plan, we're going to show an overlay of the lines and the old districts. A2, again, similar to the existing plans. And then you can see the overlay, how, just how similar those districts are. Plan D, within 9% deviation, follows some more of those neighborhood lines. And you can see that in all three of these, in A, A2, and D, you're starting to see that there's kind of a little bit of a theme that this western side district, this District A, which is a district that is largely around a plurality, Asian or close to it, in all of these plans, is the, one of the newer districts from the last redistricting. Plan F, with a smaller 5% deviation. Now, this was the first one that we're talking about that's based on a, on a Districter submission. And so you'll see in the left-hand side in this green sidebar, it says ID 86566. And if somebody were to look back at the last hearing, you'll see or hear that there were a set of plans that we were asked to elevate up to being these draft maps. You can see this map and the existing lines. This actually shows you how much these plan, these maps actually differ from the existing districts. Plan G, ID 77539, again, a public submission that was elevated to be one of your draft plans, and the overlay. Plan H, ID 77567, again, this is a draft plan. We can see some more significant differences to that District A on the western side. And we can see how that, these districts are related to your existing lines. Plan I is ID 87613, a very narrow deviation, and we can see how that looks with the existing lines. J, ID 102694, and an overview of how that looks with the existing lines. And now there's a couple of new ones that we wanted to make sure that you got a chance to see within this presentation. These are not elevated to be any of the draft maps with the letters. These are submissions from the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition. This one has a small deviation of 2.3%. You can see its relationship to the existing lines. And then map number two, a deviation of 1.7, and you can see the relationship to the existing lines. These maps, since we didn't create them, and they weren't a big discussion point in the last hearing, I might expect that the creators of these maps will either testify during public comment, or council members and the public should have access to a letter that they submitted that discussed these plans, and can give us some of the information we might need to help understand the rationale behind drawing these districts within those rank criteria, you know, protecting communities of interest, being compact, and so on. So these are those plans. Then, of course, I mentioned at the outset, the VietRise 1, and the, and that plan and the VietRise 2. And those plans, again, we've had a much more thorough discussion about these in the prior hearings. So, where we're at is if the council members want to propose changes to any of these potential plans, we can talk about doing some swaps between districts. We can talk about, you know, making maybe some shifts that don't even require an offsetting swap, because they're so small of a change. And if there is a need to make big global changes with kind of rotations of districts in order to achieve that, this would be a chance to try and discuss those. Although I will say, we have so many maps that we're looking at. I think that if somebody were to say, hey, I want to do A, B, and C, and make these shifts, we might end up just turning a plan into one of these other existing plans. Because we really only have so many real great ways to draw these maps. And I think that what you have in front of you with, you know, something that sounds almost like about a dozen maps or so that I just talked about, should provide something almost for everybody who's looking at something that they want to see in a final plan. The, the idea with this is a process of building up from public commission, public submission, from the council's discussion, to build up the number of plans that you're looking at and ensuring that we hear from the community, that every community voice is being respected in the process, and that we're actually looking at and considering all these plans. And then a process of narrowing down the list. I want to emphasize that as we narrow down the list of potential plans, we want to do that based on the rank criteria and ensuring that we're not doing anything that would be contrary to the Voting Rights Act. So we want to make sure that as we're doing this, we're coming up with rational basis for how we're going to maybe select a couple of plans that can move forward. And the idea is that we can narrow the number of plans that are on the council's agenda in a future hearing, and, and then ultimately get to a point where the public knows, like either, this is the one plan the council's considering, or these are the two or three plans the council's considering, and they can focus their comments and their attention on those plans as you get to the point near the end to adopt a final plan. And I believe your deadline is right around April 17th, to have the council make its final decision. And then we will, at Redistricting Partners, work with the county and the county registrar to implement those plans and make sure that they have all the data they need to make sure that it can be used for the upcoming election. And with that, I'll go ahead and take any questions.
Great. Why don't you go ahead and hang on, Paul? We have a couple of members of the public that are here in person that want to speak, and then I'll have the clerk call on anybody that's online. So let me go ahead and start with Anna Charco, followed by Sarai Arpero.
Good evening, Mayor Sarmiento and City Councilmembers. My name is Anna Charco, and I am here with the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition to promote greater community engagement in redistricting. The SRRC has created a space through which Santa Ana residents have identified and articulated communities of interest. And we have also worked with them very closely to create a map that addresses the needs of low-income communities of color and working families. Together, we have identified various communities of interest throughout the city. These communities of interest are mobile home residents, Vietnamese residents, residents affected by the environmental justice burden, low-income residents, and residents in the Delhae and Sulivan community. These communities of interest are thoughtfully captured by both SRRC 1, SRRC 2, something that the VietRise Santa Ana Goals map, or the map, the 104,634 map fails to do. Both maps also thoughtfully capture the historic Afro- and northern district and the southern district. These communities of interest were brought forward by the community for their interest to maintain a unified voice and for their needs for, for their needs to be accurately represented. Therefore, we urge you to adopt one of the two maps proposed by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for that, those comments. Let me go ahead and call on Sarai Arpero.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Sarai Arpero. I'm a promoter in Santa Ana for over 20 years. I'm here to talk about item 16. My community is around Chestnut and Holiday, and it's a community made up of Latinx, primarily of Latinx residents. Our communities of interest are interested in housing, well-paying jobs, and many other things. We are asking you to support the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition's map, and because this respects my community. The map defends the community of interest and the vulnerable people. And we need to, this will provide results and for better equity for our community. The pandemic is not the issue. The issue is poverty, the lack of opportunities, and many other things. We support the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition map number one. So, Ms. Neida Mendoza, we are angry that you didn't support us the last time. You supported a map that would support your reelection. The districts should represent the communities of interest, not power votes. You did not listen to your community before. We hope that now you respect the community that you represent. You are a public servant.
Thank you for those comments. Let me go ahead and turn it over to the clerk to see if there's anybody online or on the phone that'd like to make a public comment.
Thank you. For those members of the public who are joining us by way of Zoom or teleconference, please make sure you have your hand raised virtually on Zoom, or select star nine to raise your hand, only for the redistricting item number 16. And before I start unmuting callers, I did want to announce that we did also receive written communication, 17 Santa Ana residents in support of map Plan F. One Santa One Santa Ana resident in support of keeping West Floral Park, Jack Fisher Park, Floral Park, Morrison Park, Park Santiago together. And one local organization, Southern California, in support of Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition maps. And with that, zoom ID @acelilopez714@gmail.com. If you would please select star six to unmute. Can you lower your volume on the other device you're using?
Si, buenas tardes.
Oh, buenas tardes. Si puede bajarle el volumen, por favor.
Si, permítanme un segundo. Gracias. Me escuchan ahora sí?
Si, ahora sí. Por favor, puede continuar con su comentario.
Si, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Araceli Robles. Yo soy residente de la ciudad de Santa Ana en Distrito 6. Y estoy haciendo mi comentario para apoyar las mapas que está proponiendo la coalición porque realmente es lo que necesitábamos nosotros en estos momentos como comunidad. A veces yo me pregunto cómo es posible que paguen tanto a consultores, a expertos, cuando los expertos en la ciudad de Santa Ana es la comunidad que estamos sufriendo el día a día. Todo el no tener recursos, el no tener trabajo, el que nuestras personas están muriendo de COVID y por no tener seguro médico. ¿Hasta cuándo vamos a pensar de esta manera? Yo me pregunto. Mi nieta tiene siete años y aquí hay diez años, va a ser 17 años. Y yo estoy abogando por ella para que tenga mejores oportunidades de vida, para que podamos seguir permaneciendo en Santa Ana. Y la verdad, para mí, y discúlpeme, señora Nélida, es una pena de que usted esté tomando una silla cuando usted ni siquiera tiene interés por la comunidad. Ni siquiera le preocupa cómo vivimos en nuestra comunidad. Hace un tiempo le dieron un reconocimiento por apoyar a la comunidad latina. Me gustaría saber qué tipo de comunidad es la que apoya usted. Este, me preocupa que sea mi representante y no escuche realmente lo que la comunidad necesita. Yo le apoyo a los concejales que están apoyando todo el trabajo comunitario. Sé que algunas veces reciben algunos comentarios o alguna presión política. No se preocupen, nosotros como comunidad estamos aquí y vamos a estar con ustedes para tomar la mejor decisión y que los mapas realmente reflejen lo que nuestra comunidad necesita y merece porque nosotros somos dignos de respeto, de confianza, para poder continuar viviendo en Santa Ana. Gracias y que tengan buenas noches.
Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Araceli Robles and I'm a resident of Santa Ana in Ward 3. And I'm here to support the coalition, the map that the coalition is presenting. We need that to support our community. And I don't understand how you're spending all this money with consultants and with experts when we, the residents, we are the experts. We are the experts because we are the residents. We don't have jobs. We have family members dying of COVID. We don't have health insurance. And my granddaughter is seven years old. And in 10 more years, she's going to be 17. So I'm looking to provide a better opportunities for her, for her life. And I'm sad to say that, Ms. Nélida, you are sitting there and you're not interested in our community. You don't care how our community, Latino community does. I think that you were recently recognized for supporting the Latino community. And I want to know what Latino community that you are supporting. I am concerned that you are my representative because you don't represent my community. So I'm here to support the, you need to support the community. And we are here to make this decision and to choose a map that reflects our community. Thank you.
Person with the last three numbers, señora Hernandez. Si, por favor, avance.
Gracias. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Mrs. Sylvia Hernandez. I will talk about the agenda item 16. I have lived in Santa Ana for 30 years now. I live on the corner of Chestnut Avenue and Hickory Street in the East Side neighborhood, where most of the residents are Hispanic, hard-working, low-income workers who live with two or three families. Because even with two or three jobs, we cannot each afford a home. We don't have enough parks for our children. But we are a community that came together to work on our needs. And we appreciate when we are included in deciding how to improve our neighborhood. Like the Santa Ana Active Streets program that teaches us how to share the streets and how to travel safer on our bicycles. Or the Community Gardens program that offers a physical activity and an opportunity to generate organic products in a sustainable and very healthy way that united our community. In my opinion, the districts proposed around my community by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition faithfully respect the needs of my community and consider us as a community with the same interests and as a community in a situation of greatest vulnerability. Thank you for listening and consider that.
Thank you. Person with the last three numbers, 477. If you would please select star six to unmute your call. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, mayor, city council, and city staff. This is Dale Heldig, Ward 3. I appreciate the fact that redistricting is a very difficult decision for all of you. And it's going to last for years to come. But I just encourage you to keep communities of interest intact. But don't base your decision on what is being best for you guys. Base it on what's best for the city of Santa Ana. So I hope you make good decisions and keep the criteria that Paul has addressed as what is important. My only concern is the maps that we're creating aren't based upon prison population. So even though it's a pretty transparent process, I feel like we're working with incomplete data. I don't think the prison population numbers are that great, but it's still a difference between what you guys are doing and what we're doing. So thank you and good night.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, 010. If you would please select the microphone icon on your device. Zoom ID, Hirow, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Hello, this is Victor Mendez. I had called in actually for the public comment, not for the hearing. So I'm not too sure how that happened.
I can go ahead and put you back. Mr. Mendez, I can go ahead and put you back on the speaker queue until we open up the other item.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Zoom ID, Hirow, if you would, you may proceed with your comment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Hirow Cortez. I'm the executive director at Chispa, an organization that organizes and advocates for young Latinxes in Orange County and working-class Latinx communities at large. I'm calling in support of the proposed maps by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition because it respects the most vulnerable communities of interest in Santa Ana. The communities of interest the coalition acknowledges and respects are mobile home residents, Vietnamese residents, residents affected by environmental justice burdens, low-income residents, and residents in the Delhi and Sullivan community. More importantly, we want to emphasize that the District F and both the SARC maps accurately represent and thoughtfully consider the residents of the Delhi community, Madison Park community, and Cedar community. Residents of these communities are primarily composed of low-income, mixed immigrant status Latino families who are heavily impacted by environmental issues according to the CAL EnviroScreen and UCI Soil Lead Analysis Data. It is crucial that these neighborhoods are kept together to ensure that their cultural background, socioeconomic needs, and environmental justice demands are accurately represented. Therefore, we are concerned that the revised Santa Ana Goals Southern District supported by Councilmember Becerra disturbs these residents' needs and this community of interest as they put in a district with a very different community when it comes to income levels, housing situations, and environmental justice impacts. I urge you to adopt one of the proposed maps by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID, Gerson Núñez. If you would please select the microphone icon to unmute your call.
Si. Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Gerzo Núñez. Soy miembro activo de OCO, de la Iglesia Episcopal del Mesías, en Santa Ana. Vivo en la calle 17 y la Espurión. Y consideramos que el mapa World no es compacto, nos perjudica porque no hace igualdad. Son solo beneficios personales, no involucran a la comunidad en el proceso de distribución. Y rogamos a Dios que se considere los mapas sometidos por la coalición. Muchísimas gracias a todos y Dios los bendiga.
Good evening to all. My name is Gerzo Núñez and I'm a member of OCO. I attend the Episcopal Church of the Messiah. I live on 17th and Spurgeon. And I'm here to say that the world map does not represent the community interest. It's their personal reasons, personal interests, and not the community. So I ask God that you choose one of the maps that is presented by the coalition. Thank you and God bless you.
Zoom ID, Biff Baker. If you would please select the microphone icon. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Sarmiento and members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to this meeting. My name is Biff Baker. I'm a volunteer with OCO, that is, the Orange County Congregation's community organization, and a longtime parishioner at Episcopal Church of the Messiah located in downtown Santa Ana. I'd like to express my support for the maps proposed by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition, SARC 1 and SARC 2. The maps are compact with a high degree of contiguity. They're scrupulously aligned with relevant laws. They have low deviation. And most importantly, they're based on close attention to the needs and concerns of the communities that will be affected by changing districts, especially low-income communities. I think everyone realizes at this point that it is not possible to take a flying leap and arrive at a district map that is truly equitable and well-designed. From the comments of our friends from the redistricting partners, we can see that the technical issues are daunting. The redistricting coalition has done the needed research and work to help the council and the city to achieve an equitable and well-designed map. In particular, we're concerned that a recently proposed map entitled Santa Ana Goals may not adequately consider the interests of vulnerable residents. Communities of interest such as the mobile home parks around Willowick and the eastern area of the city with its problems of lead levels and other environmental challenges are not respected in their integrity. So again, this is in support of the SARC 1 and 2. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Zoom ID, excuse me, Zoom ID, Maria Valencia. If you would please select the microphone icon. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Mariestela Valencia and I am a Santa Ana resident and a community organizer with Orange County Congregation's community organization. OCO is a part of the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition. I currently live by First and Grand. As a long-life resident of Santa Ana, this process is very important to me, especially when it comes to uplifting community voices and lived experiences. I wholeheartedly believe that the two maps submitted by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition do that exactly. These maps uplift those voices of the residents that are immigrants, renters, low-income, and families of mixed immigration status. It also uplifts the environmental justice issues that we are currently facing in Santa Ana, such as high levels of soil-led contamination. These maps also ensure that the Vietnamese community voice remains strong. Maps SARC 1 and 2 open up the opportunity for the community to feel empowered within the city of Santa Ana. There have been other maps that have been submitted that are not compact and that they heavily divide marginalized disadvantaged communities. It dilutes the voice of the community by putting affluent voices above those that have been marginalized. That is why I would like for the council to consider the maps submitted by the coalition that have taken months to outreach and engage the community. This process is extremely important to us in ensuring that the community voices are heard and empowered. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Zoom ID, Irene, if you would, oops. Zoom ID, Karen Alvarado, if you would please select the microphone icon. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Good evening, mayor and honorable members of the council and city staff. My name is Karen Alvarado. I am leader organizer with OCO, Orange County Congregation Community Organization. And as you know, we're part of the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition. First of all, I just want to start off by thanking the council for extending the redistricting process to allow deeper community engagement for all residents, especially, of course, those most impacted by the recent wave of COVID variant. So I really want to acknowledge that and thank you all. Secondly, as you've been hearing tonight, a couple of weeks ago, we, the coalition, submitted two maps for council's consideration. And these maps, as you know, are a result of several months of deep community engagement that centers lived experiences, low-income communities of color, and working families to ensure equitable representation in the city. These maps are legally compliant with the Fair Maps Act and Federal Voting Rights Act. They are compact, they are contiguous. But most importantly, they keep key communities of interest together. Specifically, they keep the mobile park communities prioritizing the Willowick and Sullivan community together, which extends all the way down to McFadden. They also maintain a district in the westmost part of the city with Asian polarity. They maintain the Delhi community and communities most heavily impacted by the soil-led crisis together within the same districts. Other maps do not have the level of engagement that these maps provide. Specifically, the Santa Ana Goals map under number 104634 does not prioritize compactness and maintaining communities of interest together. It breaks up the mobile home parks community, breaks up the Willowick and Sullivan communities that share very similar interests. Additionally, it separates the Delhi community from other environmentally impacted communities. This alongside several other reasons is why we do not believe this map should be considered to advance in this process. The most enriching part of the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition maps is that they reflect direct community input from diverse communities across the city. This is why I urge you, the council members, to support advancing maps SARC 1 and SARC 2. Thank you so much for your time. God bless.
Thank you. Zoom ID, Blanca Ruelas. If you would please select the microphone icon.
Hello?
Hello. You may proceed with your comment.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Blanca Ruelas, alcalde y miembro del Consejo. Soy líder comunitario de OCO. Pertenesco la Iglesia Episcopal del Mesías de aquí de la ciudad de Santa Ana. Vivo en Washington Square por más de 22 años y estamos apoyando los mapas SARC 1 y SARC 2. Estos mapas son de la coalición de la redistribución de distritos. Estos mapas son más equitativos para todas nuestras comunidades y para la ciudad completa de la ciudad de Santa Ana. Muchas gracias por darnos la oportunidad de poder dar nuestros comentarios y esperamos sean escuchados por ustedes. Buenas noches.
Gracias.
Good evening. My name is Blanca Ruelas, mayor of city council. And I'm a leader with OCO and attend the Episcopal Church of the Messiah in Santa Ana. I'm a resident of Washington Square for over 22 years. And I'm here to support the maps from SARC 1 and SARC 2. And I'm here to support the maps from SARC-1 and SARC-2, which are the maps that were presented by the coalition. These are the maps that are most equitable for all of our communities and for all the city of Santana. Thank you for the opportunity to comment and we hope that you listen to us. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Caller with the last three numbers, 496, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device to unmute or select star six.
Dear Mayor Sarmiento and Santa Ana City Council members, my name is Indigo Vu. I'm a staff member of Viet Rise, one of the leading organizations of the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition, as well as a longtime resident of Ward 1. First, thank you for undergoing a process that ensures that all communities in Santa Ana, particularly vulnerable, low-income, and at-risk communities, can participate in this redistricting process. I'm advocating for the adoption of one of the two maps developed by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition because they prioritize working-class marginalized communities of color, including Vietnamese communities, the Willowick community. It keeps the Willowick community with the Santa Ana, Santa Anita neighborhood and the Sullivan neighborhood, maintains the integrity of the mobile home parks of First Street and Fairview Street, keeps environmental justice interests together, and maintains compact interests that maximize the representation of vulnerable and housing burdened communities. I would like to express my concern for Plan F, number 86566 map. This map version splits multiple communities apart and does not create compact districts in accordance with the Fair Maps Act. District A splits the Willowick community from the Santa Anita neighborhood and instead pairs it with the community by Edna Park, which has little in common with the Willowick community. District B cracks environmental justice interests and puts them with the rich communities unaffected by environmental issues. It also separates the Logan and French Court neighborhoods from Delhi, which is a heavily impacted neighborhood with environmental issues. District C does not maintain a compact district as it brings in communities south of Seventeenth Street up to Civic Center Drive without any special communities of interest present and in relation to the communities north of Seventeenth Street. District D separates Willowick from the Sullivan neighborhood. These two communities face housing issues that must be addressed and should be kept together. The Sullivan neighborhood is also split into two. District E splits up the mobile home park community, particularly those located on First and Fairview Street. District F heavily cracks the environmental justice communities in the city and lumps them with residents that are predominantly higher-income and occupy single-family homes on the other end of the city. Please reject Plan F map and support the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition 1 and Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition 2 maps. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Daisy Cruz, if you would please select the microphone icon and proceed with your comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Daisy Cruz and I'm calling on behalf of the Kennedy Commission for the redistricting process, item 16. We urge you to consider and adopt one of the proposed maps by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition. Through a series of meetings, the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition has educated members and residents about redistricting and created a space through which they identify and articulate communities of interest important to them. These communities of interest are mobile home residents, Vietnamese residents, residents affected by environmental burdens, low-income residents, and residents of the Delhi and Sullivan community. As others have already mentioned, the community members that live in these areas know best what their needs are. We believe that the proposed map by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition accurately represents these communities' interests and their needs. We urge you to adopt one of the proposed maps by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Vincent, if you would please select the microphone icon to unmute your device and proceed with your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you. You may proceed with your comment.
Hi, council. My name is Vincent Tran. I'm the community engagement coordinator for Viet Rise. Viet Rise is a leading member of the Santa Ana Redistrict Committee or Coalition along with OCO, LHA, and OCEJ. The Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition has been meeting since September 2021, working with Santa Ana residents to research, work towards, advocating for equitable redistricting for our communities. I'd like to express my support for the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition maps. These two maps does the best job in ensuring that mobile home residents, environmental justice-impacted communities, and also apartment and low-income Latinx API communities are fairly represented. They're most compact and address very specific issues in terms of allowing the best representation to take place for these communities. As housing price increases, we need to center the needs of communities such as mobile home residents, apartment residents, at the forefront. And they should be kept together to include, to allow for representations that will address their particular issues. And these two particular maps bring together the Willowick and Sullivan communities, along with mobile home parks, together into one district, but also creates another district in the furthest west, brings together the highest concentration of mobile homes together. This district keeps that environmental justice interest together rather than pairing it up with higher-income communities in southern Santa Ana. And in addition, I'd like to express my concern for Plan F, number 86566 map, as this map breaks up Willowick and the Sullivan community and also cracks the environmental justice interests. So please reject Plan F and support the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition Map 1 and Map 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Julia Gomez, if you would please select the microphone icon to unmute your device. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Julia Gomez and I'm a staff attorney at the ACLU of Southern California. We sent a letter to the council today in support of you adopting either SARC Map 1 or Map 2. These are maps submitted by the Santa Ana Redistricting Commission, I'm sorry, Coalition. We urge you to adopt either of these maps and urge you not to adopt any map that splits up communities of interest, including communities identified by the coalition. In addition to requiring that jurisdictions follow federal law, the Fair Maps Act also requires the city to, in order of priority, adopt a map with contiguous districts that maintains communities of interest, that follows easily identifiable lines, and that are compact so that nearby areas of population are not bypassed in favor of more distant populations. Both of the SARC maps follow these federal and state criteria. For example, the districts in both maps contain substantially equal population in each district, and neither map impermissively dilutes the Asian or Latino votes, so it complies with Section 2. The maps also don't violate the constitutional prohibition against racial gerrymandering, against racial gerrymandering, which prohibits the use of race as a predominant factor when redistricting absent a compelling government interest. The coalition, while it considered race and ethnicity, also looked at other interests and issues such as maintaining shared interests and concerns, maintaining mobile home parks, and so on. The maps also comply with the state's mandatory redistricting criteria. As I've mentioned, both maps contain geographically contiguous districts. And importantly, and as detailed much better in the map narratives, the maps maintain several communities of interest. Districts A, B, D, and F are largely the same in both configurations. And the characteristics that they capture include, to name a few, a high number of mobile home parks and shared restaurants and faith institutions in District A, more affluent and historic neighborhoods in District B, a high number of mobile home parks and shared environmental justice concerns in District D, and low-income mixed immigration status households facing environmental justice issues in District F. District F also keeps the Delhi community intact. There is also a large community of interest in the southern core of the city that includes low-income, working-class, and mixed-immigration status households. And these communities are kept together in Districts E and C. So again, we urge you to move forward SARC Maps 1 and 2 and to reject any maps that split communities of interest identified by the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Lionel Flores, if you would please select the microphone icon to unmute your device.
Hello, everyone. My name is Leonel Flores, lifelong resident here of the Madison Park neighborhood. And I'm calling in support of the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition Map 1 or 2. And also to ask that you reject the... Uh, the... What's it called? Uh, the proposal for 86566. I believe it's the Map Proposal F. And the reason for that, as previously people have mentioned, it divides multiple communities of interest. I think someone also mentioned, like, it's a lot, it looks like there's a lot of gerrymandering going on there. Not only is it dividing communities of interest, but it's dividing neighborhoods, including the Madison Park neighborhood. So instead of holding communities intact and in, you know, like they said, in square or compact shapes, it's dividing actual neighborhoods, not just communities. So, yeah, I support the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition Map 1 or 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Kayla Asato, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device.
Hi, yeah, my name is Kayla Asato. I am the redistricting organizer for Orange County Environmental Justice. As Leonel so wonderfully mentioned earlier, the Santa Ana Goals map, I think that is still 86566, does split up communities of interest in the southeast part of Santa Ana. But also it splits up into the communities like this Madison Park, Delhi, Cedar Street communities, and separates them from other environmental justice communities known as like the Environmental Justice Corridor in northeast Santa Ana, like the Logan neighborhood, French Court, and other company communities. That community, those communities along the eastern side of the city are very much burdened by like same levels of pollution, soil-led. And it would really be in the city's best interest to keep them together instead of putting the Madison Park and southeast parts of Santa Ana together with the most affluent parts of the city. So, yeah, if you could disregard Map 86566 or Santa Ana Goals for that reason, in addition to its splitting up several communities of interest, and vote for the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition map, that would be amazing. And yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. Zoom ID Danny, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Danny Vega, resident of Ward 3. I'm calling to show my support for Map F. It keeps neighborhoods of interest together for both the south and north end of Santa Ana. And of course, it also maintains Asian plurality on the west side of Santa Ana. But you know what? At the end of the day, regardless of what map gets adopted, I just want to say that all Santa Ana residents should have an equal voice, regardless of what you look like or how much money you make. You know, at the end of the day, we're all neighbors and we all should care about each other. And I just feel like we needed, that needed to be said. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Zoom ID Jeffrey Katz, if you would please select your microphone icon to unmute your device and proceed with your comment.
Yeah, thank you. This is Jeffrey Katz. I live in Ward 3 and like Danny, I'll be advocating for Map F. There are a number of reasons which justify the unanimous support of the city council. It doesn't prioritize any community. It supports a fair representation throughout the city. But I want to focus on two aspects of this proposed map. The map's unification of the southern neighborhoods, and the map's absorption of Washington Square into the northern neighborhood district, and the designation of the neighborhoods west of the Santa Ana River, Edna Park, and Concord to another district. And I say this for the benefit of both of these sections. And in the analysis, I want to focus on the community of interest criteria that's set forth in the California Constitution. Case law and legal literature indicate that a community of interest analysis should consider these sorts of factors. And I'm not going to expand on this, but I know our council members know these neighborhoods, Washington Square and Edna Park, very well. So consider how these factors truly dictate why Washington Square should be with Northern and Edna and Concord should be in another district. One, lifestyle. For example, community character, recreation, shared social gatherings. Two, demography. For example, income, immigration status, housing, education levels, graduation rates, median household income, poverty levels, access to technology, homeownership rates, language isolation, voter registration rates. Three, geography. Edna and Concord sit on the other side of the Santa Ana River. Political subdivisions. Those particular neighborhoods are actually in the Garden Grove School District. And finally, economy. And I want to, with economy, I want to focus on commercial areas. I know it's routine to use main streets as boundaries, but I'd like to suggest that doing so with Seventeenth Street is nefarious and it's divisive. As I've often heard, the euphemism of the people north of Seventeenth to be distinguished from the people south of Seventeenth, and we need to stop doing that. A number of residents here have been working extremely hard on revitalizing Seventeenth Street. And I think to absorb Washington Square that sits on the southern side would facilitate. But I really liked what Danny said. I think everybody that has spoken here tonight is really looking to make lives better for every resident of Santa Ana. And sometimes we get the euphemism of gentrification, revitalization. But I think when it really comes down to it, we're all looking for representation that makes life better, not for any single community, but for all Santa Ana residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Policy Team, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device and proceed with your comment.
Hello?
Hi.
Awesome. All right. Hello, Santa Ana City Council members. My name is Christina Nguyen and I represent the Orange County Asian and Pacific Islander Community Alliance, OROCAPICA. While our main office is in Garden Grove, we do provide services to enhance the health and well-being of all Asians and Pacific Islanders in Orange County, including community members in Santa Ana. I would like to first of all thank the council members for all the work they've done to ensure that all communities in Santa Ana, particularly vulnerable, low-income, and at-risk communities can be heard and participate in this redistricting process. I would also like to express my support for the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition 1 and Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition 2 maps. These two proposed maps address issues raised by Plan F, ID 86566. It keeps the Willowick community and the Santa Anita neighborhood and Sullivan neighborhood together. The integrity of the mobile home parks on First Street and Fairview Street together, and it keeps the environmental justice interests together while maintaining compact districts that maximize the representation of vulnerable and house-burned communities. In addition, I do have some concerns regarding the Plan F, ID 86566 map. As this map splits multiple of the previously mentioned communities of interest apart and does not create compact districts in accordance to the Fair Maps Act. Please reject Plan F and support the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition 1 and 2 maps. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Fatima Paké, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device.
Buenas noches. ¿Puede bajar el volumen el otro aparato que está viendo? Buenas noches, alcalde y miembros del Consejo de la Ciudad de Santana. Mi nombre es Fatima Paké. Soy voluntaria de OCO, Orange County Congregation Community Organization, y pertenezco a la Iglesia de San José aquí en Santana. Vengo a apoyar a la coalición que hemos trabajado por varios meses escuchando las voces de nuestra comunidad y sus necesidades. Que queremos abogar por una política que defienda la dignidad de todas las personas para... para transformar los sistemas injustos en nuestra ciudad, poniendo nuestra fe en acción para promover cambios positivos para nuestras diversas comunidades con sus propias características culturales, religiosas, económicas y sociales, las cuales están vulnerables con la distribución de distritos. Buscamos las mejores alternativas en pro de nuestra ciudad para que aumente el acceso y oportunidades de nuestras comunidades permaneciendo unidas. Necesitamos trabajar conjuntamente autoridades y líderes comunitarios para tener mejores distritos. Como por ejemplo, mi vecindario está en medio de dos parques, el French Park y el French Court. Estamos divididos entre apartamentos y casas históricas, las cuales se denotan la diferencia entre dichas comunidades y el cambio que ha sufrido el Downtown de Santana especialmente la Ford Street. Nosotros tenemos que tener en cuenta que hay mucha importancia porque de aquí va a depender que los diez años que nosotros tomemos en cuenta para nuestros hijos sean esenciales y queremos que garantice que el futuro de nuestros siguientes concejales nos representen equitativamente a la población de Santana y en su diversidad, sin olvidar todas las necesidades especiales en cada uno de nuestros vecindarios. Agradezco, tomen en cuenta los datos de nuestros mapas SARC I y SARC II porque nosotros no solamente tenemos que tomar en cuenta a los votantes sino a toda la población que vivimos en Santana, que tengamos una misma voz para los residentes sin importar su situación migratoria, económica, racial, política, cultural, y que todo sea en pro de nuestra ciudad. Muchísimas gracias por escucharnos. Buenas noches.
Gracias.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Fatima Paké and I'm a volunteer with OCO and I attend the Saint Joseph Church and I'm here to support the, the coalition map because we've been working with the community, uh, listening to the community's voice for months. This is, uh, is, this, this policy is going to give dignity to all of us in the community and we are here, uh, to, for, uh, to, to fight against unfair, uh, systems in the community, uh, to put our faith into action and, uh, our, our community volunteers, we are here to support the redistricting, uh, the, the coalition map. This is, uh, a time, this is going to be the best for our community, uh, to unite our community. Uh, we need to work together for, to have better districts in our community. And for example, my neighborhood is between, uh, French Park and French Court, which is divided, which is, has apartments and historic homes, uh, surrounding it, uh, uh, next door near to, uh, Fourth Street. We know that this is important, uh, for the next four years so that we, this is going to benefit our kids for the next, uh, ten years. Uh, this is going to also affect future council members that we hope represent the Santa Ana residents and its, uh, its diversity. And thank you. And we are here to support, uh, maps for SARC I and SARC II. So not only, this should not only support the voters of Santa Ana, but also Santa Ana residents in, uh, the economic diversity, racial, cultural situations. Thank you for listening and good evening.
Zoom ID Annabelle Parra, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device.
Persona con el nombre en Zoom, Annabelle Parra, por favor, active el sonido en el aparato en que está usando Zoom. ¿Aló? ¿Me escuchan?
Sí, puede continuar con su comentario.
Sí, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Annabelle Parra, pertenezco al distrito número cinco. Soy residente de Santana por veintitrés años. Estoy aquí para hablar sobre el punto número dieciséis de la agenda. Y vivo entre la calle MacFadden y Primera, en donde la mayoría de residentes de esta zona de mi comunidad, de comunidad, son de bajos ingresos y con varias necesidades tanto como básicas. Y de, de mi comunidad, um, hay muchos niños y jóvenes con varias necesidades. Ah, por lo tanto creo que los distritos de Santana respeten infirmemente a mi comunidad y sus necesidades y alrededor de mi comunidad, ah, sobre el mapa, perdón, eh, sobre el mapa y las propuestas, ah, de las necesidades básicas de la coalición que defienden a la, a las comunidades intereses de Santana más vulnerables. Gracias señor alcalde y miembros del consejo por garantizar su apoyo a nuestra comunidad.
Gracias.
Uh, good evening. My name is Annabelle Parra and I'm in Ward Five, resident of Santana for twenty-three years. I'm here to talk about item sixteen on the agenda. I live around MacFadden and First. And most of my community is, uh, low-income and we have, uh, several, uh, basic needs. We need to support our youth that have a great, our youth and children have great needs. And, uh, the redistricting needs to respect my community and its needs. And around the, uh, for the, for the map, the proposed map for the coalition, uh, needs to support our communities of interest and the most vulnerable. Thank you, mayor and city council for supporting our community.
Zoom ID Manny De Leon, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device and proceed with your comment.
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You may proceed with your comment.
Hello, my name, hello council. My name is Manny De Leon and I'm a field coordinator with the Orange County Asian and Pacific Islander Community Alliance, OROCAPICA for short. While our nonprofit organization based in Garden Grove, we do provide services throughout Orange County, which does include Santa Ana. Uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you all for the hard work y'all have done to ensure that all communities in Santa Ana, particularly vulnerable, low-income and at-risk communities can be heard throughout this redistricting process. I would also like to express my concern for Plan F, number 86566 map. This map's dividing multiple communities and does not comply with the Fair Max, uh, Fair Maps Act as it does not create compact district. It splits up numerous communities, uh, within Santa Ana. In addition, I would like to express my support for the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition One and Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition Number Two maps. These two maps propose, uh, propose, address the issues raised by Plan F, uh, again, number 86566, by keeping the Willow Wick community with the Santa Ana neighborhood and Sullivan neighborhood. It also keeps the integrity of mobile home parks on First Street and Fairview Street. It keeps environmental justice interests together and maintains compact districts that maximize the representation of vulnerable and housing burden communities. Again, please reject Plan F, number 86566 map, and support the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition One and Number Two maps. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID, Zoom ID Hernandez, if you would please select the microphone icon on your device.
Sí, buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Eh, buenas noches, este, alcalde y miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Laura Sandoval y soy líder de OCO, de Ores County. Pertenezco a la Iglesia de Santana y estoy aquí como OCO, como parte de la coalición de redistribución de distritos de la Ciudad de Santana. La Ciudad de Santana es el lugar de la comunidad latina más grande y establecida del condado de Ores. Esta a su vez es la que cruza y constituye muchas otras comunidades de interés. Por ejemplo, incluye inmigrantes, inquilinos, poblaciones de bajos ingresos y familias con estatus migratorio mixto. Para nosotros es muy importante esta noche estar aquí porque estamos apoyando a los mapas SARC I, SARC II. Porque si ustedes, ah, se fijan en las coordenadas que nos presentan estos mapas, nos están presentando una equidad igualatoria de lo que es la democracia en representación de una sociedad individualista para bienestar de nuestra población que viene representando nuestros centros culturales, nuestras iglesias, nuestros parques y la unidad que representamos como latinos en estas comunidades. Las coordenadas que nos presenta el mapa GOES nos especifica claramente esa desintegración de una comunidad de equidad igualatoria donde no se da el valor a nuestra democracia. Creo yo que es muy importante porque esto se viene representando o se viene presentando desde meses atrás. Esto yo creo que se va, va a tener un impacto y un reflejo tremendo en las urnas de los votantes. ¿Por qué? Porque nosotros los votantes somos los que los sentamos a ustedes en la silla del poder, entre comillas. Nosotros somos los que les damos ese voto que los lleva a estar allí sentados como representación de nosotros para nuestros intereses, más no como intereses de un poder individualista. Creo que es tiempo de que como personas que llevamos tiempo en esta lucha de una coalición, trabajemos en conjuntividad y trabajemos tomados de la mano por una equidad igualatoria, porque esto va a representar a la larga una perjudicial situación para nuestros estudiantes porque se están quitando distritos. Ah, muchísimas gracias.
Gracias.
Yeah, good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Laura Sandoval. I'm a leader at OCO and I go to the Santa Ana church. And I'm here representing the, the coalition, the Santa Ana Redistricting Coalition. And the city of Santana, um, is very important because it's the, uh, largest Latin, concentration of Latinos in, uh, Orange County. And, uh, we have other, uh, our communities of interest are, are several. We have immigrants, we have renters, low-income people, uh, mixed immigration status people. And it's important to be here to support maps, uh, SARC I and SARC II. Uh, if you look at the coordinates in the maps, uh, they provide equality and, uh, for the democratic, uh, representation. And this is to benefit our, our, our community, our culture, and our churches, our parks, and, uh, our unity as Latinos. Uh, map two, uh, clearly, uh, has this, this, uh, equality. Uh, this doesn't value our democracy and it's important because, uh, we have been moving along and working together for months. And, uh, this, the, the maps that we have should be reflecting, uh, uh, this will be reflected in the polls and the, you have to remember that the voters are the ones that put you into, uh, quote unquote, into power. We give you, uh, the vote for you to sit there as our representatives, not to represent individuals', uh, power. So I believe it's time to fight as a coalition, to work together for this equality, uh, to, uh, this representation. And this is for the benefit of our students.
Zoom ID Jesús Santana, if you would please select your microphone icon and unmute your, to unmute your device. Thank you. May proceed with your comment.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. This is Jesús Santana, a community organizer who's currently supporting the resident group known as Sullivan en Acción. I would like to start off by saying thank you to the city's Arts and Culture Office, as well as the Neighborhood Initiatives Team, um, for involving Sullivan and Acción leaders in the planning of the Willets and Sullivan Vietnam Project Celebration. Uh, thank you as well to all the city's staff, council members, and mayor who joined the Sullivan residents in unveiling the Fortifus Sculpture of a Coyote. We really hope to see ongoing support from all the council members and staff who attended the event on Saturday, January twenty-second. With that being said, the Sullivan en Acción team and I would like to encourage you all to consider implementing one of the, one of the maps that the Santana Redistricting Coalition has proposed to you all. In particular, Mayor Potem Basara, who currently represents the southern half of the Sullivan community, and council member Jonathan Hernandez, who currently represents the northern half of the Sullivan community. We strongly believe that both of their maps are inclusive and reflective of the needs of our mobile home residents, low-income, immigrant, Vietnamese, and most vulnerable community members here in Santana. We thank the Santana Redistricting Coalition for taking Sullivan into account and for ensuring that the city has options for equitable maps that do not continue to separate communities of interest such as Willow Wick and Sullivan. Thank you for your time and I hope you all have a great night.
Thank you. Caller with the last three numbers, six, three, one, if you would please select your microphone icon to unmute your call. Persona con los últimos tres números, seis, tres, uno, por favor, marque estrella seis para reactivar su llamada.
Sí, buenas noches, señor alcalde, miembros del consejo y los demás representantes. Ah, mi nombre es Ariana Cabello y he ido residente de Santana por aproximadamente diez años. Ah, me dirijo a ustedes para discutir el punto dieciséis de la agenda. Vivo entre la calle Tercera y Flower, donde la mayoría de los residentes son individuos, trabajadores, inmigrantes, de bajos ingresos y vulnerables. Las necesidades de mi comunidad son bastantes y entre ellas es el hecho de ser escuchados por nuestros, nuestros representantes que nosotros elegimos. Por lo tanto, creo que los distritos propuestos alrededor de mi comunidad por la Coalición de Redistribución de Distritos de Santana, SARC, representan firmemente a mi comunidad y sus necesidades. Los mapas propuestos por la coalición defienden a las comunidades de interés y a los residentes de Santana más vulnerables. Ah, respetuosamente, ah, me dirijo a ustedes para que escuchen, ah, lo que nosotros como residentes queremos, ah, expresar donde apoyamos, eh, la coalición de redistribución de distritos de Santana. Gracias.
Good evening, um, mayor, city council members and everyone else. Uh, my name is Ariana Cabello. I'm a resident of Santa Ana for, uh, ten years. I'm here to talk about item number sixteen. I live around, uh, Third and Flower. Most of our community is a working-class community, immigrants, low-income and vulnerable. Uh, some of our needs, uh, need to be listened to by our elected representatives and, uh, the proposal by the Santa Ana, uh, Redistricting Coalition, uh, is supporting and representing my community and its needs. The maps that they present, the, the coalition presents is, uh, they, it defends, the maps defend our communities of interest. So I'm here to, uh, respectfully thank you for listening, uh, to us and I support the SARC maps. Thank you.
Persona con, con el Zoom ID Irene.
Buenas noches, ¿me escucha?
Sí, puede continuar con su comentario.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Irene Baptista y soy líder comunitaria en OCO y la Iglesia Episcopal del Mesías. OCO es parte de la Coalición de Redistribución de Distritos de la Ciudad de Santana. En mi comunidad la mayoría de personas son latinos y viven en apartamentos que es muy diferente a otras áreas de la ciudad. En lo personal, yo me he involucrado en el proceso de redistribución al nivel condado y también en los nuevos mapas del distrito escolar. Como líder de fe es mi obligación moral el abogar por representación equitativa y eso es muy importante en una ciudad como Santana, ya que es el lugar de la comunidad latina más grande y establecida del condado de Orange. Esta población se cruza y constituye muchas otras comunidades de interés, incluidos inmigrantes, inquilinos, poblaciones de bajos ingresos y familias con estatus migratorio mixto. Por eso, me gustaría que ustedes consideren ver y analizar más profundamente los mapas submetidos por parte de la coalición, ya que se han tomado meses en hacer alcance comunitario. También me gustaría mencionar que el mapa de Santana Goals divide nuestras comunidades de interés y no es apropiado para nuestras comunidades. Este proceso es sumamente importante y por eso les quiero agradecer por extender la línea de tiempo para poder tomar una decisión. Buenas noches. Gracias por su atención.
Good evening, mayor, uh, city council members. My name is Irene, Irene Baptista. I'm a leader of OCO and, uh, I'm a member of the Church of the Messiah and most of our community is, uh, a vulnerable community and, uh, this doesn't, it supports our community. Um, we are, this is, I, I
Yo he estado involucrado en este esfuerzo en la Comunidad, en la comunidad escolar también. Como persona de fe es importante involucrarse en Santa Ana porque es la mayor comunidad latina de la Comunidad Orange y su población comprende varias comunidades de interés como inmigrantes, alquileres, gente de baja ingreso y gente de estado de migración mixta. Es importante que analices las mapas que han sido enviadas por la coalición porque han sido desarrolladas durante meses de difusión. Y el mapa SARC GOALS no divide nuestras comunidades de interés y no es bueno para nuestra comunidad. Y también gracias por extender la fecha de cumplimiento. Buenas noches y gracias por escuchar.
Gracias, señor presidente, y ese fue el último llamado que hicimos.
Genial, gracias a todos y gracias a todos los que hablaron aquí en persona y a los que llamaron. Déjame ir adelante y cerrar la audiencia pública y regresar al consejo por cualquier comentario o pregunta. Y veo que se levantó la mano del miembro del consejo Hernández, pero déjame empezar con el miembro López, luego el miembro Hernández y luego seguir. Madam fiscal, si quieres, déjenos recordar cuando vamos por el camino y hablando cuando llegamos al marcador de tres minutos. Gracias.
Gracias, señor presidente. Paul, voy a decirles cuáles mapas estoy considerando y mis pensamientos sobre lo que escuché del público sobre la mapa F. Como se dijo, divide Madison Park, elimina una sección de Henninger Park, separa a Sullivan y la comunidad de Willowick y remueve Washington Square de su actual ward. Y sabes, igual que la guerra III, no queremos que nuestras comunidades sean separadas ni divididas. Y no podemos hacer eso a otras comunidades tampoco. Eso no sería justo y no podemos hacer a otros lo que no queremos que suceda en la guerra III. Y me hace muy triste, es realmente molesto escuchar que los residentes de la guerra III están advocatingando por un mapa que incluiría Washington Square porque son afluentes, porque son blancos, inmigrantes. Es realmente molesto escuchar eso y eso no da a todos los residentes de Santa Ana, independientemente de cómo se ven o su nivel de ingreso, la oportunidad de representación justa. Eso es el opuesto completo de lo que están advocatingando. Y si no queremos ser percibidos de cierta manera, entonces necesitamos hacer el trabajo interno de asegurarnos de que nuestras acciones alinean y no son perjudiciales para otras comunidades. Así que Paul, estoy apoyando el mapa de la Coalición de Santa Ana 1. También voy a estar apoyando el plan D. Creo que el plan D es lo que hablamos durante la audiencia pública. Y también voy a estar apoyando el plan J. Sé que el plan J parece un poco diferente en el lado occidental, pero tiene un ward de pluralidad asiática de 43.6, lo cual creo que podría ser uno de los más altos que estamos viendo de todos los mapas. Y al ver el mapa, mantiene la mayoría de los corredores transitivos juntos, lo cual escuchamos. Mantiene los vecindarios noreños juntos, crea un mapa sur. Mantiene el parque memorial junto, Santanita junto. Mantiene nuestras comunidades de justicia ambiental junto. Y sabes, según lo que escucho o lo que he oído, alcanza el objetivo de asegurarnos de que todas las comunidades que hemos escuchado están representadas y sé que eso en sí mismo ha sido para algunos inequitable porque continuamos escuchando a las mismas personas y lo aprecio. Pero no estamos escuchando a nuevas personas y eso me permite saber que lo que estamos haciendo, cualquier paso que sea, nuevas voces no están siendo incluidas en el proceso. Pero creo que el personal está haciendo todo el trabajo que han hecho. Sé que ha sido un proceso extenso y es difícil conseguir que la gente se ponga en contacto o aparezca. Así que esos son mis pensamientos por ahora. Gracias.
Gracias por esos comentarios, miembro del consejo. Déjame ir a miembro Hernández.
Gracias, miembro López. Tus comentarios eran recientes para escuchar porque es importante que estas conversaciones sucedan y que llamamos lo que es. Tenemos que centrar nuestra justicia ambiental, pero no debemos olvidar la justicia social y la equidad, muchos de los cuales, la mayoría de estas mapas, no han tomado en cuenta. Ha habido múltiples homicidios este año en la ciudad de Santa Ana. El año pasado, en septiembre, Brandon López fue asesinado por el Pd de Anaheim, en mi distrito, el mismo distrito en el que vivió. Cuando hablamos de levantar las voces, no excluyas a la comunidad blanca. No excluyas a las comunidades que han sido hiperpolicadas y que luchan por la representación. Comunidades afectadas por la justicia no han tenido una voz en la audiencia hasta que personas como yo fueron electos. No voy a hablar en corte, te diré cuáles mapas creo que son horribles. Plan D, E, J y VietRise 1. Y además de eso, solo estoy apoyando el plan A y el plan A2 en este momento. La razón por la que no puedo apoyar el mapa de la Coalición Redistricting de Santa Ana 1 es porque separa completamente a la comunidad blanca de la parte de corazón de su representación y ponela en el mismo distrito con la frontera de Plaza Sur en el mapa 1. SARC 2, lo que hace en Ward B es que corta a la comunidad blanca y la comunidad de Townsend y como resultado, perpetúa la inequidad poniendola en el mismo distrito que sería el border de Costa Mesa. Así que la mayoría de estas mapas excluyen a la comunidad blanca, a las voces blancas, a las comunidades afectadas por la justicia. Y lo que estás haciendo cuando lo haces es accentuar la supremacía blanca. Sé que hay mucho desacuerdo en la verdad y, desafortunadamente, ese es mi trabajo, es hablar la verdad. Hay una realidad que tenemos que enfrentar y esa realidad es que las comunidades marginalizadas, desenfranchizadas han sido dejadas fuera de la conversación y es debido a procesos como este. Así que si queremos ver más candidatos de poder de base, gente, y verlos tener equidad y realmente ver a nuestros residentes tener representación que merecen, incluye a las voces blancas en tus coaliciones, incluye a las comunidades afectadas por la justicia en tu coalición. La mayoría de estas mapas son horribles y solo voy a apoyar el plan A y el plan A2.
Gracias, miembro del consejo. Déjame ir adelante y ahora ir a miembro Mendoza.
Gracias, señor presidente. Lo siento. Quiero reiterar mi apoyo por el mapa 86566, mapa F. He leído grandes cantidades de correspondencia, he hablado con muchos residentes y he oído sus preocupaciones. Los residentes han hecho muy claro que quieren ver los vecindarios sur en un ward y los vecindarios norte en otro ward. Los residentes también han expresado su deseo de ver el neighborhood de Sullivan mantenido junto. Debido al acuerdo hecho por el consejo de la ciudad en 2018, debemos tener un ward de pluralidad asiática. Creo que el mapa 86566, mapa F, se acerca más cerca a lograr todos estos y le pido a mis colegas que apoyen y aprueben el mapa 86566. Ese es el mapa F y que lo aprueben sin demora. Gracias, señor presidente.
Gracias por esos comentarios. Déjame ir adelante y ver si hay otras preguntas o comentarios del consejo. Señor Protem.
Gracias, señor presidente. Voy a hacer un pequeño comentario híbrido aquí. Así que justo antes de que comenzara esta audiencia, estábamos hablando de la desaparición y una cosa que quería comentar fue notar que en el mapa de calor inteligente que mostró el señor Gominski, yo también quería decir DPD chief, en ese mapa, viste en el extremo sur de la ciudad, viste Sur Bristol, Sur Maine y un pequeño camino de calor en el eje oriental. Y eso fue a través de las carreteras de ferrocarriles que van todo el camino de Susan, que es básicamente a un cuarto de milla oeste de Fairview, yendo todo el camino hasta Delhi y hacia el norte de allí. Y así que diría a ese hecho que entre las cosas que tienen el sur en común, esa es una cosa que tenemos en común. Encuentramos esas mismas cosas juntas. Pero para volver a la presentación que nos dio esta noche, había una cosa que destacó, la idea de mantener los wards compactos. Y esa es una de las razones por las que estoy apoyando lo que ahora se llama mapa F. Así que la coalición que habló esta noche, quiero agradecerles por venir y quiero agradecer a todos los que también nos enviaron correos y nos dieron su input sobre cuáles mapas apoyan. Sé que recibí, y estoy seguro de que mis colegas lo han recibido, muchos comentarios en apoyo de mapa F. Una cosa, aunque, que estaba escuchando mucho de los comentadores que estaban en la línea esta noche era la idea de mantener a las comunidades de interés juntas. Bueno, hay otra estadística que entra y esa es la sección 2, que es mantener a los que son el 50% latino, blanco o asiático juntos. Y el mapa F crea cinco de esos distritos, mientras que las mapas de la coalición que han sido presentadas solo crean cuatro. Así que eso es algo que debe recordar. La otra cosa que pensé que era interesante fue que alguien dijo que Edna Park y Willowick no tienen nada que ver entre sí y sé por hecho porque muchos de los folk en ambos vecindarios eran mis compañeros de escuela. Así que sé que tienen mucho en común. Y solo para mantener mis comentarios breves y terminar aquí, sabes, esta coalición dice que quieren mantener a las comunidades de interés juntas y nombraron todo tipo de comunidades de interés, pero no querían mantener al sur junto. Los vecindarios sur han trabajado excelente juntos y han solucionado tantos problemas. Así que creo que es lamentable que, mientras queramos mantener a cada otra comunidad junto, incluso el norte, nos olvidamos de que el sur existe y nos olvidamos de que ellos también tienen muchos comienzos compartidos y son comunidades de interés. Así que voy a continuar apoyando el mapa F y esos son mis comentarios por esta noche. Gracias.
Genial, gracias por esos comentarios. Déjame ir a miembro Fan.
Gracias, señor presidente. Primero me gustaría decir que entiendo que la comunidad de interés es una cosa difícil de establecer, especialmente en una ciudad como Santa Ana, ¿verdad? Tenemos asociaciones de vecindarios, tenemos diferentes tipos de hogares, tenemos diferentes estatus de inmigración, tenemos diferentes estatus socioeconómicos. No va a haber un mapa perfecto que podamos adoptar que aborde todas esas áreas. Así que quiero ponerlo ahí porque creo que, al menos yo creo que estamos todos tratando de crear el mejor mapa o adoptar el mejor mapa para abordar los más importantes necesidades de la ciudad. Así que lo primero que quiero preguntar, y no estoy segura de si se debe dirigir a nuestro consultor o a la madame del tribunal, pero respecto a la Coalición Redistricting de Santa Ana, así que estaba bajo la comprensión, y por favor dime si estoy equivocada, que si hay distritos o wards que tienen un 50+1%, eso crea un latino, asiático o negro, digamos latino aquí, eso crea un distrito de sección 2 y eso es requerido, ¿verdad?
Sí, y me referiría a nuestro consultor.
Sí. Así que esto es definitivamente algo que entra en el área de interpretación legal. Hay tal cosa como un distrito de mayoría minoría y que es el 50% más uno de una población latina, asiática, afroestadounidense. Hemos hecho redistricting en Alaska y hemos visto al nativo alaska 50% más uno. Así que esa es una métrica real que se usa en redistricting. Hay interpretaciones legales sutiles que podrían necesitar hablar con su consejo, con privacidad de derecho de tribunal, para ver si algo es realmente un distrito de sección 2 del Derecho de Derechos de Voto. Porque para ser un distrito de sección 2 del Derecho de Derechos de Voto, hay pruebas adicionales llamadas pruebas de jingles. No solo tiene que ser el 50% más alto, sino que también tiene que tener votación polarizada racial desde ese grupo para que voten como un bloque y tiene que haber una población dominante o blanca que vota como un bloque contra esa población. Y luego puede haber análisis más profundo en algunos casos donde, como en el valle central de California, hubo una pregunta sobre si la comisión a nivel estatal se requería crear tres distritos de mayoría minoría que fueran apenas el 50% o si sería mejor traer dos distritos de mayoría minoría que fueran el 55%, el 56%, el 58%. Y así, sí, tendrías menos que fueran más del 50%, pero tendrías esos dos más efectivos que si cada distrito se drolaba en ese marcador del 50%. Así que hay interpretaciones legales que interaccionan con la política de los distritos de mayoría minoría y no creo que nosotros como los consultores estemos en una posición ahora mismo de decirte lo que serías obligado a hacer bajo la sección 2 del Derecho de Derechos de Voto más que para decirte que sí, hay tal cosa como un distrito de mayoría minoría y hay planes aquí que tienen, sabes, diferentes números de esos para los distritos latinoamericanos. Lo que no está claro en este momento es si hay algún porcentaje que un distrito necesita alcanzar para ser, como dicen, "efectivo" y cómo intercambia con la sección 2 de la requirements del Derecho de Derechos de Voto.
Gracias, fue una respuesta realmente completa y eso me ayuda a entender mejor porque, como mencionó el miembro, perdón, el señor Protem Basera, no me daba cuenta de que, sabes, los dos mapas SARC solo tienen 50+1 districts latinoamericanos. Y, sabes, no estoy pidiendo interpretación legal en el lugar, pero eso me da un parpadeo cuando estoy mirando esto, particularmente mientras estoy sentado aquí defendiendo un distrito de pluralidad asiática que fue creado en consecuencia de un acuerdo en el caso de derecho de derechos de voto de California. Eso es particularmente importante para mí porque nuestra ciudad es, creo, alrededor de 80%, 85% latino, casi, tal vez el 80%. Así que algunas de las otras áreas que me preocupa es, creo, escucho a la comunidad de Sullivan muy claramente. Creo que desde el primer día han defendido mantenerlos juntos en el mismo distrito. Así que eso es algo que estoy buscando específicamente en todos estos planes. También creo que la comunidad sur de Sur Bristol merece continuar juntos. Yo viví en ese área y sé que hay muchas relaciones realmente cercanas en estas asociaciones de vecindarios y miembros de la comunidad. Colaboran, trabajan juntos, es un corredor económico que es muy particular en la ciudad y creo que enfrentan preocupaciones somewhat diferentes en la trata de, sabes, los problemas que enfrentan en la ciudad. Estoy teniendo dificultades, en realidad, elevar cualquier mapa en particular. Escucho que ha habido mucho apoyo por el, creo que es el plan F. En realidad, vi en Districter, hay un plan F actualizado que me gusta mejor. Creo que es más compacto, creo que realmente aborda algunas de las otras divisiones, así como algunas de las preocupaciones que los folk han levantado. Así que me gustaría elevar ese uno. Es ID 104634 y con eso terminaré mis comentarios. Gracias.
Gracias, miembro del consejo. Miembro Benialasa.
Gracias, señor presidente, y gracias a todas las personas que vinieron a hablar y que escuchamos a través de correo electrónico. Solo quería decir por el registro que estoy, al ver todas estas mapas, quiero decir, que han sido escondidas en la última semana, simplemente desgastando cada una de ellas, y una que me gustaría ver avanzar y estoy totalmente apoyada en es el plan D con ID 86566, porque, como dijo el miembro Fan, lo mejor, sabes, tratar de incorporar cada una de las comunidades de interés a un mapa sería casi imposible, incluso cuando estás pensando en los parques de casa móvil. Hay muchas que están scatteredas por toda la ciudad y si tratamos de sentarnos y defender todos ellos en un distrito, tendrías un puzzle raro de pieza de juego justo en el medio de la ciudad. Así que creo que la que mejor se hace de cerca y hace un poco para cada uno de estos distritos o comunidades de interés es el plan F. Tiene tu ward de pluralidad asiática, tus comunidades nortejas juntas, tus comunidades surticas juntas y hace algo que no ha estado en un mapa de distrito de Santa Ana en mucho tiempo, que son tres wards de Santa Ana central, que es algo que siempre he oído durante años de la comunidad defendiendo. Una cosa que me gustaría rechazar es la noción de que Madison Park está dividido en este ward F. No creo que eso sea cierto. Hay una frontera, según veo, a lo largo de la autopista de la calle Maple, pero algo que me gustaría señalar es que los vecindarios y los residentes que viven a, supongo, a oeste de la autopista de la calle Maple y tengo muchos miembros de familia allí y he hablado con muchos residentes allí hasta hoy lidiando con algunos, sabes, problemas de inmigración y drogas en ese vecindario, es que todos esos, son como dos o tres calles donde son todos hogares históricos que creen, sabes, en la preservación histórica de esos hogares históricos que son más de 100 años y son de el mismo interés en preservar esos hogares históricos como residentes en Wilshire Square. preserving that historic, their historic homes as a residence in Wilshire Square. So I am supportive of draft Plan F and would like to see that move forward. And that is it. Mayor Sarmiento, thank you.
Great. Thank you for those comments. I'll keep mine brief as well. I just want to recite something that I know I asked an open question at the last public hearing on redistricting, and it was about, you know, the threshold of votes that we need, whether it's a simple or whether it's a two-thirds majority. So according to Article One, Section 101.2 of the Charter, it appears it is a two-thirds majority, so that's just a little bit of housekeeping to make sure where, you know, we know where we are. So I did want to go back to some of the comments that were made by our consultant, Mr. Mitchell, on the maps as they were amended in 2018. They really are in their infancy. You know, they really are relatively new maps when we had to take a look at those when we were faced with the transition from at-large election to by-district elections, and we were using 2010 census data. I think he was, I think he's, he saw that the deviation was about 13.4. So, you know, I think a lot of these questions, even though we're now dealing with the Fair Maps Act, were still considerations that we were thinking about. How do we keep neighborhoods together? How do we keep communities of interest, whether you want to call them communities of interest, communities of color, communities that have commonalities together? And I know that for me, what we're doing, and I want to thank the staff, and I want to thank our consultant and our clerk and the council, because we, you know, this was on track to be done before the end of last year, and that would have been, I think, not a good thing for everybody, because I think we've been able to look at some maps and look at different iterations of maps as we started, and I think we're off to what we're doing, which is narrowing it down to maps that we may not all agree on, we're probably not going to agree on the final map, but that's what the process entails. So I want to, you know, support everybody's map that they proposed. My personal concerns are, you know, having to, you know, make sure that we comply with the settlement that we've already agreed to with respect to the API Ward. I think that's Ward A, and making sure that we have, you know, continue to have a plurality there. We also want to respect the EJ corridor, obviously, and for me, Willowick is important. It's becoming more and more of a pressing concern and an area of common interest there. So, you know, I would simply say, these aren't final maps or versions of the maps. We're still going to tweak them, they still can be adjusted, and I think, according to our consultant, we could still make minor changes. So I would say the ones I'm looking at right now are Plan A and Plan A II and SARC I. So in addition to some of the others, I think what we're doing is we're narrowing it down, which is what we need to do. We can kind of tweak and move and get those things done, but it's the beginning of February. It gives ourselves a little time to meet that statutory deadline in April, so I think we're going at a good clip. And with that, Madam Clerk, I guess my question to you is, do we, when do we, when does this come back to us? Does it come back to us at the very next meeting, or can we push it out to maybe the following meeting? What are your thoughts?
I think we need to bring this back to the very next meeting, and if we want, if the council has a heavy agenda on the next meeting, we could definitely meet on a special meeting.
Yeah, I just, you know, and maybe to our consultant, let's thin out the preface and, you know, sort of the preliminary slides. I mean, we all get those, and they're online, I'm sure that they're accessible to the public. He can give sort of a high-level overview, but, look, we just can't keep, you know, going through this over and over again. We've got other business that we need to take care of that's equally as important. This is no less important, but it's equally as important. So with that, why don't we go ahead and, I guess, we would go ahead and just continue this to the following?
Yes.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that what I have written down is what I think specific maps everyone had mentioned. A, A II, F, J, SAR, SARC II, as well as SARC I, and then I had mentioned map ID 104634. Those are the only ones I think any of us up here had elevated.
I think those are the ones I heard.
Sorry, I do, I was just on a redistricter, and I saw that there was a modified version of Plan J, so I'd like to see that come back, so that the full council can look at that, because that other one, map, Plan J now currently has the five districts that create that 50-plus. The 50-plus districts that we were just talking about, and again, the Southern District and the Asian plurality and a deviation of 1.5.
Got it. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I have.
Excellent. Okay, so we'll go ahead and bring this back to the next meeting, so we could go ahead and revisit it again, and maybe we narrow it down even further. Who knows? We may even get to some closure.
Mayor, if I may, just real quick, Madam State Clerk, could you read back the maps that you have as elevated?
Yes, so it's draft Plan A, A II, J, and then there's a new version of J that you said that was on redistricter, so I'll have to look at that one. Draft Plan F, and then an ID number 104634. SARC I and SARC II.
That's the same list I have. Is everybody consistent with that?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we're good. So we'll go ahead and move along. Let me go ahead and turn it back, let's go back to staff presentations. We still haven't even gotten to public comments yet, so let's go to item number five, which is the residential permit parking update, and I'll turn it over to our Director of Public Works.
Or did Madam City Manager want to give them the lead-up and a big intro?
Certainly, yes. So just a very brief presentation on a parking program study that we want to embark on, and we wanted to share with you the RFP scope of work. And I will turn it over to Executive Director of Public Works, Nabil Sabah.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. The purpose of the presentation is to provide you with a quick update on our progress with the residential permit parking program. I'm going to skip really quick. We have a background, you know, as you know, we do have 27 parking districts, up to 9,000 permits that we've issued, good for two years, and there is a lot to deal with in the parking permit program. We have a lot of challenges, as you may know. Some of the challenges are our growing number of vehicles per household, number of neighborhoods originally designed for lower parking demands, limited parking within multifamily communities, and our plan to deal with these challenges is to retain a consultant to study what we have and come back to us for recommendations. We have developed a scope of work to analyze all existing permit parking regulations and trends, survey other cities and agencies for best practices, conduct extensive public outreach, and develop options and alternatives for improvement. This is the scope of work that we have so far, and we are reaching out to you, to the residents in the city, for feedback on this scope of work, so we can send out the RFP to conduct these studies and come back to you for recommendations. We have so far went to CommLink, Artesia Pilar, Neighborhood Association meeting just recently, and this council meeting, and we plan to offer this presentation, short presentation, to all communities, Neighborhood Associations that want it. And we have also established a, an email address that can, residents can use to email us, share with us their difficulties and issues with the parking permit. This way, we could take all of the feedback to our consultant to study, tabulate, and bring back, hopefully, good revisions and improvements on the program. The tentative schedule for this is we're going to do an outreach from February to March of this year, issue the RFP, then conduct the study in July or start the study in July 2022 of this year, and come back for you, hopefully. And we also have a June, we anticipate having the study completed by June 2023, and then come back to council by September 2023 for any appropriate revisions that the consultant will be recommending. And again, we will be reaching out, and I will be providing you more updates as the consultant is hired and our progress. This is the website. Public Works is seeking input, comments, and suggestions on items to be included in the scope of work, and this is the email that we'd like for residents to use, permitparking@santaana.org, and I'm open for any questions we may have.
Great. Thank you for that presentation. That is going to be a busy email. So let me go ahead and bring it back to council, see if there's any questions or comments. Let me start with Councilmember Phan, then Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Nabil. I think there are a few of us on this dais who have been banging our heads against the wall regarding permit parking. I can tell you that my mom's neighborhood, they've been asking for permit parking since I was a kid, but they're never, they're all tenants, so... Okay, so, question or comment? Can we add considerations for overnight permit parking only? So one of the things that I personally feel that we don't really implement here in the city of Santa Ana is, in busy places like LA, you might have streets that are no parking during the day, but allow overnight parking. One example I always bring up, only because it's something I see all the time, is I live right on Fairview, there's no parking on Fairview, because I, sure, during the day it's really busy, but at night it's empty. And we have a lot of condos, a lot of townhomes that don't have parking. So I understand some of those have traffic engineering considerations, but I really do think that we need to look into that, because there are a lot of areas in the city that could, I think, benefit from that use, as well as really address some of the concerns of, you know, people have their cars parked out there, maybe there's more activity and there's less, how do I say, unsupervised areas is something that a lot of people have complained about. Another item I do want us to look into is a possible use of technology or apps. I know that that has been implemented in many areas, including parts of New York, Minneapolis, some of these big cities where, whether it's an apartment or a Neighborhood Association, HOA, they use apps to figure out what's empty, whose car it is, and similar how to, with how we use the My Santa Ana app, you know, this car's been parked there for four days, et cetera. Those are two areas I'd like for the consultant to look into. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm so happy to see this before us, even as an update at this point, because this is something that I brought before the council back in May of last year, and I appreciate my colleagues supporting this push to look at a program that's, what, Nabil, is it 20 or 30 years old? 30 years old, right?
30 years old.
30 years old. It's time to open the hood and look under and see what we can do to, you know, fix it or improve it, at the very least. As Councilmember Phan mentioned, the idea of taking a street like Fairview that's not utilized at night, I think that's a great idea, and it really rolls into what my thinking was when I brought this item forward back in 2021, was that we need to start looking at parking on a neighborhood-wide basis, and that, I hope, is one of the essential planks in the RFP, because this Hunger Games approach that we keep perpetuating in the city is not working. It creates hostility among neighbors, it's ineffective, and so really, the hope at the end of the day is to come up with a way and a policy that we can do this on a neighborhood basis. You know, Frank from your staff brought a map to CommLink last Thursday, and what was fascinating is we approve districts in the city, but the actual permits where they're actually effective along each street goes through that Hunger Game process of petitions and, you know, street by street, block by block. And the only neighborhood that I saw, and I'm kind of proud of this, is South Coast Neighborhood. They're the only ones that, over time, were actually able to get all their streets through this petition process, but there are so many of these districts through the city, and they have one line in it, or maybe two lines. So you have a designated district, but permits only apply to one or two of the streets. So again, the emphasis, I can't emphasize enough that we need to look at this on a neighborhood-wide level. The other question I have for staff is enforcement. And, Nabil, you were at CommLink on Thursday, so I'm sure you heard the resident from Wilshire Square who brought up the fact that while she has permit parking on her street, the problem is, we don't see enforcement on, say, a Friday night or a Saturday night, and so, you know, for her, she's saying how much she loved the program, but how frustrating it was for her, because it doesn't work without the enforcement aspect. So can you touch upon how the enforcement is conducted? Is it done through PD? Is it done through a contractor? And can we improve it to also include later at night, if it isn't already, but obviously with this residents' expressed concerns, it obviously isn't being done in that particular neighborhood? So can you elaborate on that, please?
Sure. I believe that enforcement is enforced by PD.
Okay.
Maybe through a contractor, but I can double-check. By PD and a contractor that does parking enforcement, so it's managed by PD.
So, just so I can understand, so the contractor who's out there doing parking enforcement is managed by PD, not Public Works?
Not Public Works. That's correct.
Okay, so Public Works manages the permit program, but the enforcement is done through PD and a contractor that PD hires?
That is correct.
Okay. I would like for you guys to bring back some information for the council. It could be emailed to us, that's fine, but I want to have a better understanding of what that effort looks like, because obviously, that is something that the council is concerned with, but I just want to have a better understanding, what are the hours that we're seeing coverage? Because obviously, for that resident to come to CommLink and express that concern, it just, it shows a potential flaw in the program. And I concur with that resident that the program is excellent, but it does need to make sure that we have that enforcement aspect to it. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that. Let me go ahead and go to my left. Let me go with Councilmember Penyalosa, Lopez, and then Mendoza.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento, and thank you, Nabil, for the presentation, and happy to finally see this, you know, getting done. One thing that I want to touch on, and I agree with everything that's been said by my colleagues, but one is simply on the physical, actual physical permit that we place on vehicles. I've heard from many residents that they just don't like the giant ugly sticker that they have to stick onto their bumper cars. Our residents, you know, the ones that have cars, they're, you know, it's their property. I mean, I wouldn't want to put any sticker on my car at all if I had this permit parking. So I've heard in other cities, the city of Orange, I have family that lives in Orange, they have the placards that hang on the rearview mirror. And the city of Anaheim, you know, I believe it's Anaheim, or if it's not, Fullerton, also have rearview mirror placards. They're convenient, they're easy. I feel that these stickers are very restrictive to our residents as well, because, you know, I know that, you know, my uncle, for example, lets his daughter borrow his car, and she goes to school in, I think it's UC San Diego or Cal State, or, doesn't matter. She's out, and she, now she has his car with this parking permit somewhere in San Diego, and he has another car that doesn't have... Point is, you can't swap these out easily amongst the cars in a particular family that lives in a home. So I would like us, as we're looking at this, to consider moving away from the stickers that we force residents to stick on their cars. I know a lot of residents would agree with that, and maybe getting something that's more convenient to move around and swap with their cars, and that's visible. I know other cities have it, and it works. Why can't we do it? Is that something that you guys have considered?
Yes, it is in the scope of work. Right now, the stickers are specific to the house and the vehicle, that's why it is on the vehicle, so we're looking at some changes, and that is, that will be considered in the scope of work.
And there's no reason why the placards can also be color-coded and, you know, have that specific to a home, you know, that it's, maybe it's be a sticker on the placard. The point is, residents have brought up to me that concern on numerous occasions. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for those comments. Let me go with Councilmember Lopez, Mendoza, and then Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Director Sabah. So we're talking about a 30-year-old program. It's pretty old. We know that it needs to change, it has to adapt with what we are seeing here in the city. And, you know, when you do your outreach, I want to make sure that staff is being very intentional about targeting the neighborhoods that have the condos, the apartments. In Ward Three, we have a mix of condos being in single-family home areas, and you and I know that's caused issues. We've done a lot of background work on that to help residents, and so I want to make sure that the RFP is going to take into consideration the difference that we do now here in how we treat single-family homes from multifamily units. And City Attorney, I want you to follow up with me, because in 2015, former- I want you to follow up with me, because in 2015, former General Attorney of California, Ms. Harris, she issued an opinion stating that local governments cannot discriminate among residents based upon their dwelling type, like dwelling type permits for single-family homes, but none for the apartments, I should say. And so, I don't know if that is binding. That is the question. And I just want to make sure that if it is, if we're complying, if it's not, or if anything has changed, please let me know. I want to make sure that we're all aware about what's happening there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Mendoza?
I know that the handicapped and disabled placards, persons who hold those special permits are in a different category, so I just want to ensure that there's a section in there that addresses whether they're exempt from the parking regulations that we're going to enforce. That was it. Thank you.
An excellent point. Thank you for that comment and that question. Let me go to Councilmember Hernández.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. I agree with a lot of my colleagues' comments, particularly Councilmember Peñalosa. I think having something that would be visible, hanging from a rearview mirror would be a good route for us to take. A couple of communities of interest that I know have reached out commonly to me, expressing their concern with parking, is that the Logan community, the Santa Anita community, and the Artis Apilar community, particularly in the area closer to Santa Ana College and the Our Lady of the Pillar Church. So, if staff can take a close look at that, so we can mediate some of those issues related to parking. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Yeah, I think they were all excellent comments made, and hopefully you'll incorporate those, Mr. Saba, and, you know, as we go through the RFP and configuring that. I'm going to go ahead and just mention something I could always mention. I think the better relationship we have with our school district here in Santa Ana, we somehow come to some understanding of using those campuses when they're not in use, you know, after school, on weekends, to maybe use those, you know, those parking spaces for our residents, especially in some of those impacted neighborhoods. And there's some small commercial properties as well. I know there was a deal that the Archdiocese had struck with the DMV, actually, on First and Grand, when they would have large events, they would use overflow parking there. So, there are creative ways where we can do that, you know, make some impact. I know, you know, other big cities do the same thing, or, you know, struggle for parking. And one other thing, I know this is more of a comment for our Director of Planning and Building, but I always, you know, think that, you know, the more we compel or try to persuade our developers who introduce new multifamilies to start looking at the stacked parking, you know, that is getting a two-for-one sometimes. And so, you see places like Vista de la Sol and some other, you know, high-population, densely populated cities have that. So, you know, something to look at, you know, I'm sure that they could probably incorporate it with their costs, but anyways, I think you received a lot of good input. Hopefully, you know, we're looking forward to, you know, speaking with you more about this, and we know it's been an age-long problem that, you know, will be nice to have addressed over time. So, let me go ahead and move along to the City Attorney and ask her if she has anything to report at a closed session.
No, Mayor, we do not have any reportable action from the discussions this evening.
Great. Thank you for that. Let me go ahead and move along to the public comments section. So, this is a time and place for members of the public to address the City Council on any agendized and non-agendized items pursuant to the Brown Act. The council may not enter into any dialogue or discussion with any members of the public. We will hear from members that are here presently, or, excuse me, physically, and then we will go to any members of the public that are on the line or virtual, and I'll turn it over to the clerk at that point, but I will go ahead and take the cards from those who are here, ready to address us. And please, you know, as you know, we're limiting everybody to three minutes, and you should have a timer in front of you, and if you can, please mention your name. You don't need to mention your address, but let us know if you're in the city, and if you're in the city, what ward or neighborhood you're in, so that would be very helpful. Let me go ahead and begin with Larry Gonzalez, followed by Nathaniel Greensides.
Good evening. My name is Larry Gonzalez-Rivas. As many of you know, the City Arts and Culture Office unveiled the first-ever sculpture at the city of Santa Ana two weeks ago. I am the artist, and I am here to personally thank the mayor and City Council members who attended the unveiling ceremony. Councilwoman Jessie Lopez, Mayor Protem Phil Becerra, Councilwoman Nalida Mendoza, as well as you, Mayor Vicente Sarmiento. Beyond that, I want to encourage you to continue to foster this. I thank this council as a whole for having discussions about the topic related to funding art, specifically public art. The investment is minimal, less than the cost of a Honda Civic, four-cylinder with no tint. In this instance, for the coyote, in this instance for the coyote, it was actually several thousand less, and I'm not kidding. Anyway, the point is that investment into communities can take many forms. Please give this a more critical second look at these alternative forms, to turn around, improve, inspire, and uplift the community who traverses daily, whether it be the children of Lincoln Elementary walking across the school street every day, the jogger, the dog walkers. Residents can all come see, approach, interact, and read poetry in what would otherwise be a dirt lot with no lighting in the far-from-the-city-center part of Santa Ana. The art is often overlooked but carries potential many orders of magnitude. The ROI can be exponential. If we're using that kind of number or wording, then you know what I mean, is that one has the return-on-investment potential for tens, hundreds, et cetera. So, why not fund a little, or a little more? This time, the neighborhoods around Sullivan and Willets get a unique sapphire gem encrusted in the corner. It features a blue coyote howling, flowery poetry. The poems below are from Aztec times, sung by Prince Nessauacoyot hundreds of years ago. It also recognizes and incorporates the late Mr. David Vázquez's script style, and Mr. Vázquez was a Santa Ana resident and teacher. Finally, I want to use this opportunity to invite the residents of the city and surrounding communities to come and take a look at the statue. You can simply drive by since it's on the corner, and the easiest way to find it is to simply Google Abraham Lincoln Elementary School in Santa Ana. It's right across the street. You can't miss it. It's huge. It's 14 feet tall. Thank you to all the neighborhood residents who came out to take pictures and told me they really liked the statue. I really appreciate it, and that was the number-one goal, to make sure the neighborhood liked it. Bella Vista, Casa Bonita, Suliban en Acción, thanks a lot. Also, to Lincoln Elementary staff kids. Lastly, I want to say thank you very much to Tramley and Gabby Kramer, who both work at the city of Santa Ana. They are two of the most professional and courteous people I've ever had the pleasure of working with. Please continue to support the arts, so this great city can become a beacon of inspiration for residents today and always. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you. And Larry, we let you go a little longer, because what you were saying was so powerful, and your art that you displayed, and I want to thank the colleagues that attended and those that are supportive of the arts. Thank you. On behalf of all of our residents, not just those neighbors there, but on behalf of the entire city, thank you. Thank you for that. Let me go ahead and go to Nathaniel Greensides, Patricia Bo, followed by Lori Ortiz.
My name is Nathaniel Greensides. I'm a Ward 5 resident. And first, I want to give acknowledgement to the land upon which we're sitting and conducting our business that once belonged to the Ahachman and Tongva peoples, who, without their stewardship, for millions, let's go with millennia, millennia, made this place as beautiful as it is, this place that we call home. So, here we are in February, Black History Month, which also happens to be the shortest month of the year, and that's a shame. But nonetheless, our nation was built upon the outright kidnapping and subjugation of human beings from Africa to become slaves, in pursuit of economic prosperity for a few white men. And the descendants of the people who did the hard work in the fields and plantations got the shortest month of the year to celebrate the beauty of being black in America. To celebrate black American history is to recognize, reify, and respect the history of oppression inflicted upon our families and ancestors, simply because of a made-up belief in white superiority. Respect, when broken down into its morphemes, means to see again. To not only see again the achievements and wealth of culture which our black skin community members contain in every cell of their existence, is to recognize the wrongs that are still being perpetrated today. I think it's no accident that a lot of the ardent supporters of Plan F's map come from neighborhoods where there are literally covenants on the properties, where non-Caucasians were not allowed to buy or live in those neighborhoods. While I do believe that the future looks brighter when we can acknowledge that race has played a determining role in shaping once-positionality in our society, we need to ensure that it is coupled with a critical analysis of who is pushing for changes and the motivations behind those. I find it suspect that Anaheim High School's vote regarding the changing of their mascot from "the colonists" is also the same city where alt-right neo-Nazi posters and individuals happily still, in this day, in 2022, make their presence and teachings known. And so, with all this, I say to you, Happy Lunar New Year, Happy Black History Month. May its teachings exceed the short month in which we celebrate it. And finally, in the spirit of art, I want to leave you with the last two stanzas of a very well-known poem that I've incorporated into my being since high school by Maya Angelou called "Still I Rise." Out of the huts of history's shame I rise, up from a past that's rooted in pain I rise. I'm a black ocean, leaping and wide. Welling and swelling I bear in the tide. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear I rise. Into a daybreak that's wondrously clear I rise. Bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave, I am the dream and the hope of the slave. I rise. I rise. I rise.
Thank you for that. Patricia Bo, followed by Lori Ortiz.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Bo, and I am a proud resident of Santa Ana for these past five years in Jack Fisher Park. I'm also the Orange County Group Lead for Moms Demand Action, one of the largest grassroots advocacy networks in the country with more than 8 million supporters. And today, I'm here with our group, behind me, representing the hundreds of supporters and volunteers who live and work in Santa Ana. We are mothers and others fighting for public safety measures that can protect people from gun violence. First, I'd like to thank Councilmembers López and Mendoza for their request to consider a Secure Firearms Storage Ordinance, which is Agenda Item 19. So, thank you. This request is also very timely, as today is the first day of National Gun Violence Survivors Week, honoring the 58% of all American adults and the 68% of Black and Latinx Americans, whose lives have been forever impacted by gun violence. This week is designated as National Gun Violence Survivors Week because this first week in February marks the approximate date that gun deaths in the United States surpass the number of gun deaths experienced by peer countries in an entire calendar year. And I'm aware that there are members on the council whose lives have also been forever changed by gun violence, and we have survivors here tonight in our group as well. We have a saying in the gun violence prevention movement that we honor with action, and that's why we're here tonight. This proposed secure storage ordinance goes right to the heart of public safety. More than half of gun owners in the United States do not lock all their firearms securely, leading to an estimated 200,000 to half a million guns stolen every year. Many of these stolen guns are funneled into the underground market, where once-legally-owned firearms can be transferred to people with dangerous histories. Data shows that gun owners who securely store their firearms, and this means storing them locked, unloaded, and separate from ammunition, have a lower risk of gun suicide and a lower risk of loss by theft. Research also shows that secure storage practices play a vital role in reducing the risk of gun violence. Storing firearms securely protects children and adults by preventing unintentional shootings and gun suicides. In addition, there's a wide variety of affordable options for firearm storage that provide owners with quick access to their guns, while still preventing access by children and people at increased risk of harming themselves or others. Lastly, as I'm sure you may have heard from some of our advocates, while there are over 70 California cities with a similar Secure Firearms Storage Ordinance already on the books or in the works, there is no city in Orange County on this list. If you pass this measure, Santa Ana would be a leader in Orange County on gun safety, giving me yet another reason to be proud of my adopted hometown. So, I'm asking the council to please support and proceed with this requested item to introduce a Secure Gun Storage Ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. And thank you all for joining us. Let me go ahead and call on Lori Ortiz to join us.
Good evening, council. I've been a Santa Ana employee for over 25 years, and I've never been prouder than I am today, with Santa Ana taking the lead in Orange County, concerning consideration of a firearm safety issue that's very important to me. I'm here tonight as part of Moms Demand Action and the focus on gun safety, speaking in favor of Item 19, to consider drafting an ordinance to secure firearms, and for taking guns' safety seriously. I thank you. I'm a mom, I'm a nana, and the issues concerning gun safety are a priority to me, and to Moms Demand Action, to every Town USA supporters, and the many parents and grandparents throughout the nation that have been affected by gun violence. Tragedies have increased. So, to Mayor Sarmiento, the council, and especially to Councilmembers López and Mendoza, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for your leadership, your critical leadership on this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lori, and thank you for everything you do for the city as one of our city family members. I think that is it for the members of the public here in chambers. Let me go ahead and turn it over to the clerk. Do we have anybody online or on the phone that wishes to address us? Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do, Mayor. And before I unmute the caller that we have, we only have one, I did want to announce the written comments that we received. So, two non-agenda comments, one on a Santa Ana organization in support of the downtown art walk, and another in support of the flavor tobacco ban. Also, Item Number 3, the Santa Ana resident commented on stricter laws against those unhoused in harassing citizens in the city of Santa Ana. And then, Item 19, on the firearms ordinance, two in support, one Santa Ana resident and another residency not disclosed. And with that, caller with the last three numbers, 010, if you would please select your microphone icon on your device. Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Hi, Victor Mendez, Ward 3. Item Number 9, as you know, I've spoken to this ad nauseam for the last year, and you have a situation in front of you where you're about to award a $1.2 million sole-source extension to a contractor. I'm not trying to disparage as far as the contractor's qualifications. This is an awful lot of money on the sole-source award. It's further difficult to understand this in light of the fact that at least a half a million is being used from the budget surplus, money that was created by the citizens, you know, for their benefit. And I would think there would be at least some level of sensitivity to the council, that they can maybe get local business to get involved in these types of contracts. This is just a little bit too much. In fact, it's far too much. Couple hundred thousand, whatever, that's not so bad. We're talking a $1.2 million sole-source extension with no major justification at all. So, please pull this after reconsideration. And let's just see if we can get some small businesses and local businesses involved in this contract and give them a little piece of the pie. Thank you. Secondly, I did review the complaint from the Santa Ana police officers, those taking charge of various parties of the city. My only advice is, let's try to get that fixed. I see a lot of information, a lot of issues that can probably be resolved internally. But the ones that stand out to me are, one, the sexual harassment charges against our police chief, and, two, the apparent conflict that interests that seem to come from our city attorney, who's also named, or the city attorney who's being contracted through the law firm. who's being contracted through the law firm. I think you need a separate attorney to look at this situation objectively, relative to her involvement and what type of counsel you have, and whether or not you can legitimately defend the law firm in this process. I think you ought not only as a matter of governance, but to the citizens themselves. But again, I think a lot can be fixed. The sexual harassment claims of the chief are very serious. I don't think you should necessarily deny him, as appears to be the case versus the quote in the Orange County Register. Let's be fair about it. Let's be objective about it. Let's be neutral about it and do this thing appropriately to the benefit of all concerned. Lastly, there was a mention of the arts, which I fully appreciate. I myself have a budding artist in my family. I asked him why he liked to paint, and he said it allows him to think freely. And he's also a diehard Bernie Sanders supporter, which God help me, you know, between that thinking freely and being a Bernie supporter, I don't know what I'm going to do, but I think you get the point. So I fully support what was said by Larry. The arts are an incredible venue for children, even for adults, to express themselves, to liven our city up. Let's try to look for various avenues to get our city up and running and be the true cultural center of Orange County that it is. Thank you.
Victor, thank you for that. Now we're at the consent calendar, so I'm going to ask my colleagues if anybody has any items that they need to abstain from. Councilmember Phan?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I will be abstaining from Item Num... Where did I put it? So Number 15? Out of an abundance of caution, although the primary contractor or party in that case is not Rancho Santiago Community College District, the item is relating to their use of the property in some way, and they are a client of my employer, Ratan and Tucker. So I will be recusing myself from that item. Another one is related to Item Number 13. Statewide Traffic Safety and Signs, Inc. is again a client of my law firm, Ratan and Tucker. I've never worked on those projects, but I will be recusing myself from that item. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, are there any items that my colleagues would like to pull? Councilmember Penalosa?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Basera. I'd like to pull Item Number 10, just a proposed license agreement between the City of Santa Ana and Santa Ana Unified School District to use a Memorial Park parking lot.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Penalosa, Mayor Sarmiento?
I'm good. I'm not going to pull any. So do we have anything besides Mayor Pro... our councilmembers?
I think that was it.
Great. Why don't we go ahead and if... let's move the balance of the consent calendar if there's a motion.
I'll second.
All right, I'll move it and then Mayor Protem will second. So Madam Clerk, or colleagues, if you'll please vote.
Madam City Clerk, my vote is yes.
Councilmember Lopez, are you able to vote? Okay, I will go ahead and call out your vote. Councilmember Hernandez, your vote was a yes?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lopez? Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza? Yes, yeah, if you can verbalize it since I can't get everyone showing their votes on... Councilmember Phan?
Yes.
Councilmember Penalosa?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Basera?
Yes.
And Mayor Sarmiento?
Yes, thank you, everybody. Was the only item, Item Number 10, polled by Councilmember Penalosa? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. Again, Item Number 10 is a proposed license agreement between the city and the school district, Santa Ana Unified, for use a Memorial Park parking lot. And Madam City Manager, you let me know who I should direct the questions to, to you or the Executive Director of Parks and Rec? And then I have a couple.
I will ask our Executive Director of Parks and Rec, Lisa Rudolph, to step up to the mic. I'm not sure what your questions are yet, so you have both of us present.
Perfect. Thank you so much. So as, you know, I live near Memorial Park and also attended Washington Elementary, class of 2000. So, go Patriots, Washington Patriots. But anyhow, so I was calling because I wanted to see if you guys... I know that the tentative agreement is from February 1st today to June 30th of 2023. And the questions I have is through 6:00 PM. I know that Memorial Park is very active when it comes to the baseball Little Leagues, the Pop Warner Football Leagues, the swimming classes and recreational swimming that goes on at Memorial Park. So, a lot of the Little League games, Pop Warner, the cheerleading that goes on starting soon and going through most of the fall happens, you know, starts, you know, parents start arriving around 3:00, 4:00 PM. In years past, remember, I've lived next to Memorial Park my entire life, parking has always been an issue during these, this programming, this various programming. And it's for good reason. You got a lot of parents from across the city that are coming to Memorial Park to use these fields. Did we check to see how we will be able to mitigate this parking concern when that programming starts? With any of the Pop Warner or Pony Little League or the swimming?
Yes, Councilmember Penalosa, we talked with staff who have the reservation permits for those activities that go on and felt that it would not impact or if there was something special that was going on and we needed the parking earlier than 6:00 PM, we would just communicate with the school district and see if we can make some adjustments. The school is out earlier, but the staff stays a little bit later. That's why they put the end time at 6:00 PM. So I think we do have some flexibility. They came to us with the need because of their construction and we said, we would like to help you out. Can we utilize your parking lot when it's completed in case we have some activities and events that happen after it's finished? And so we want to just keep that relationship open. So I think we're flexible with that in case there's any tournaments or special events or things that are happening during Monday through Friday to 6:00 PM.
So I'm trying to understand, because I mean, I'm happy that you had those conversations with the school district in case, in the event that we do need that parking. They would be flexible, but what would they do exactly? Are teachers going to park on their soccer field, you know, if we need it? Or are they going to park in the neighborhood? Because, I mean, I know it's a concern. Every year during these numerous events, that entire strip of parking along Flower and St. Gertrude, and I forget what the other two streets are, but they're all, they're all full. Every parking spot is full, spills out into the neighborhood. And it is, I've gotten some complaints, but a lot of them are like, you know what, it's Little League, it'll be gone in a couple hours, it's fine.
Right.
But I just know that by completely omitting this stretch along Flower for a year and a half, I mean, that's going to... I know it'll have an effect. I don't, I've never seen us have to use the Washington Elementary parking. So I don't know why now we would ask them if we could use their parking if we need it in the future once they're done. I'm just worried that this is going to be a nightmare for our residents that are used to using Memorial Park for Pop Warner, Little League, swimming, I mean, the cheerleading, I forget the actual name of the cheerleading that goes, works out of there because parking is limited along that park. So, yeah. Is there a way that the hours could be restricted to 3:00 PM?
No.
Because elementary gets out at 2:00, you know, 2:30.
They have after-school programs and so 6:00 PM, you know, if there's any flexibility, we can perhaps occasionally be earlier than 6:00 PM, but I would have to speak with them about that.
So have you reached out to the Memorial Park Neighborhood Association about this at all?
No.
No. So no Memorial Park Neighborhood Association, none of the various programming, athletic programs that run out of the park have been made aware that this will severely impact their parking? Another thing that I noticed in your contract, in the staff report, it said that it just says that licensee will be responsible for opening the parking lot gates during usage times, be responsible for any loss. It doesn't say anything about closing. And I know that in an email, you and the city manager had told me that they would, the city would be in charge of closing at 10:00 PM so that it remains open for public use. But in the contract, Page 1, 1.3, it says licensee will be responsible for opening and closing the gates to the licensed area Monday through Friday during the term of the license agreement. I know that I foresee this happening. Tomorrow on February 2nd, they're going to open the gates at 6:00 AM and at 6:00 PM, when that last teacher leaves, they're going to lock it up. Then I'm going to have residents calling me saying, hey, these gates are closed. We can't park because it's happened before. So why does the contract say something different than what the staff report mentioned? Because the staff report doesn't say anything about closing the gates, but the contract does.
Right. So they will open the gates at 6:00 AM and they will lock them throughout the day and open them, open it up again at 6:00 PM. Our park security will close it at 10:00 PM.
So can we amend that Section 1.3 to say licensee will be responsible for opening gates and state the specific time? And closing the gates to the licensee? I mean, not closing because we don't want them to close the gates because
Right.
if school district staff leaves at 6:00 PM, they're going to close those gates because they're not going to come back at 10:00 PM to close them. So I want to make sure that that's clarified in that contract to avoid them closing the gates for the public to use
Yes.
at 6:00 PM. One final thing, I noticed that the amount being charged for this will be going back into the general fund?
Yes.
Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
So another thing that I would suggest and I would ask my colleagues to entertain is, and I know that last summer I had a couple of neighborhood meetings at the park and I had Dumpster Day that was very popular. We filled up two huge bins. I took liberty upon myself with the city manager to take one of the plastic drums that for, I don't know what reason, we've used as trash cans throughout our park system. I took one that was broken in half and I pitched it in the trash. And park staff had just replaced the bag in it. I'm like, that's not acceptable. So I was asked to get new trash cans and we got new trash cans, aluminum trash cans that anyone can find at Home Depot, very low cost. So I would like to ask if that, those funds could be used to purchase acceptable trash receptacles for that park?
We certainly could earmark that for that purpose should the council desire to. On the hours, the understanding is that they are going to open them for the teachers and then they're going to close it while the teachers are using it and then open it back up at 6:00. So they're not closing it at 6:00. And I don't believe that the current language in the license agreement conflicts with what our understanding is and their understanding is on the opening and closing.
So Section 1.3, I mean, doesn't... I just want to make sure it's clear to them that they're going to open it, they're not going to close the gates when they leave. They're going to remain open.
They're going to close them while they're using the licensed area, but then they will leave them open at 6:00 PM.
Okay. Well, I just, I just don't like that none of these organizations were reached out to because I know parking does become an issue when it's in operation. So that's all I would ask is that if those funds could be earmarked to stay in that park for new trash receptacles at the very least. Just because when I was asked, why can't we have appropriate trash cans at this park? There was no funding for it. And now this, it's only $39,000, it's going to get lost in the general fund, probably fund, I don't know what, but those are it, those are my comments. Sorry, Mayor.
Is there a motion or what do you want to do? I mean, I guess I'm kind of confused. I mean, I...
I guess I would make a motion to approve this with the agreement that 1.3 is clarified that they will not shut the gates at 6:00 PM because I know that that will happen. And also if those funds could remain in the park.
Okay.
For park amenities as simple as the trash cans, because there are not any appropriate trash cans at that park currently.
But that is a motion to approve with those, a clarification and a dedication of the revenue.
Yes.
All right, so we have, for purposes of discussion, there's a second, but we have a question by Lopez, Councilmember Lopez and Councilmember Phan.
Actually, I had a question as a second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Just real super quick, so who actually is going to close the gates under this whole arrangement?
The school district and our private park security at 10:00 PM at night.
So in other words, from what Councilmember Penalosa is asking, so we won't have school district staff close it at 6:00 because that's not what we want?
Correct.
We'll have essentially, they'll open it and then our staff or contractors will close it.
At 10:00 PM, yes.
At 10:00 PM, okay, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Lopez and Councilmember Phan?
I am supportive of staff's recommendation as is. I think the earmarking of funds should be a completely different point of discussion and vote. I don't think it should be bundled. And if that is the train of thought, if, you know, the school district wants to use a park or something near a park, then that is something that maybe the school ad hoc can take up and say this is what we want to present to them or to staff or to the council that that money that is being returned to us be earmarked for the surrounding communities that the school district is going to be partnering up with the city. I think that's a fair ask and it's something that I've heard before from members of this council, don't bundle things, you know, bring them forth as a councilmember requested item or have a separate conversation on them.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember Phan.
Thank you, Mayor. I am supportive of having those fees go back to the same community that it's impacting. I don't, you know, whether it's with the ad hoc or just, here it's very specific, right? It's a very clearly defined park. My, I'm actually not supportive of this agreement right now. It doesn't, I guess I don't know, maybe you can get me the information, but has the school district spoken to any of the surrounding private property owners with what looks like an abundance of parking space? Because I think it'd be really great if they were held to the same standard in discussing utilizing parking space as they demand of us because there are a lot of industrial and parking space. In fact, right across the street on Warner, it's a couple of really large parking spaces and I think they really should go out there and talk to those property owners so that our residents are not negatively affected, you know, by their lack of outreach. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. So there's a motion and a second with some changes and there's obviously a difference of opinion generally. I think I'm supportive of staff's recommendation for a number of reasons. I think what it does is it promotes this this environment to being able to, you know, share resources and we're going to have to, you know, look at some of their resources that we can share as well. But I do think if there's receptacles that are, you know, inferior at this park, let's find some way to fund it. Maybe it's not through this specifically, but let's just, you know, figure those out. We should do an inventory of what we need. I'm sure there's some others as well, other parks. Sorry, Lisa.
Yes, yes, we do have, we do have funding for trash receptacles which we'll be putting in this year. They're the cement receptacles. They're going to be going into all parks as well as the doggy waste station. So those will be coming. But if the funding, whether that remains, you know, where that is allocated, I'll point to the city manager to...
Well, look, if it makes sense, I think if it addresses the council member's, you know, concern for the park and the ward he represents, if that's going to be, if those receptacles are going to be replaced and introduced there anyways, maybe we don't do something, you know, from the dice and just go ahead and make it a clean approval. I'm certainly supportive of it without that amendment because those receptacles are going to be replaced anyways. Those are my thoughts. But in any event, there's, what do you think?
Well, I do agree with what Councilmember Phan said. I don't believe the appropriate outreach to any of these organizations have been done. And so I will rescind my motion. And if Councilmember Phan wants to make that motion to deny this contract, I will happily... And if Councilmember Fan wants to make that motion to deny this contract, I will happily second that or I'll make the motion myself. And also just wanted to clarify that, you know, including $39,000 in trash receptacles for a park is not trying to, it's very different than trying to bundle in, you know, half a million dollar costs with multiple staff positions. So let's, you know, not compare apples to oranges when we're making these decisions. So I'll make the motion to deny the agreement.
I was, I just wanted a continuance and make sure that they actually do this outreach and, you know, the same standard we expect of all of our items.
I'll second that motion.
So there's a motion, so I'll make a sub-motion of continuing the item coming back and letting us know what type of outreach has been done and also let us know the urgency of this matter so that the teachers have access to parking, because we certainly want them to be able to do their jobs as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that clarity, I think there's a second here by Councilmember Fan on that continuance. Hopefully that's something we can all agree on, if not, we've had enough discussion on this, so there's a substitute motion to continue the item and do we need 30 days maybe or what do we need on this?
This is time sensitive, this is very time sensitive for them, so the next meeting if I can bring it back at that time.
All right, all right, and if, if things aren't done yet, then we can always push it out another meeting.
Just quickly, you know, I know we're about to vote, but we can't be, Mayor Potembe Sera has brought this up multiple times, we can't have a time sensitive agreement like this. I'm not saying it's your fault, but if the school district has a time sensitive issue, they need to be bringing this to us once in advance because there are a lot of concerns on this dais and if it's something we were supposed to give to the ad hoc committee, that would have taken even longer. So I do expect that when they want something, they need to approach us a lot sooner. Thank you.
Good point, thank you.
I just wanna double down on that.
Councilmember, let's, let's get through, no, we, you know, let's, you had a really long, you know, I let you go on well and I think you spoke really articulately.
When my other colleagues speak, you say the same thing.
No, but look, let's just, you know, you did five minutes and I think that was more of a courtesy because everybody else has been really good about limiting themselves to three minutes, so why don't we go ahead and vote and vote on the motion that's before us?
Councilmember Hernandez, if you would announce your vote, please. Oh, never mind, we saw, thank you. Okay, motion passes with Councilmembers Lopez, Mendoza, Fan, Mayor Potembe Sera and Mayor Sarmiento voting yes. Councilmembers Hernandez and Councilmember Penylosa voting no.
Great, thank you, everybody.
My apologies, Madam City Clerk, my vote was a yes vote, I misunderstood the, the motion.
Okay, we will go ahead and change your vote, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. You know, we just went through the consent calendar, I just wanted to mention an item that I didn't wanna pull and talk because everybody's supportive of and I'm very supportive of, item number 15. So I just wanna thank staff because I know it's been around for, what, 13 years it took to go ahead and figure this out. So Lisa, good job to you and your team, Ron, I see you back there smiling underneath that mask. But this might have been around a little longer had you guys not tackled it, but as a result of that, you know, dealing with the National Park Service and, you know, Correa's office and, and everybody else that was involved, obviously the chancellor, we have three new parks, three small spaces that was, that we were able to, you know, figure out and, you know, be able to have that footprint there and not not disrupt things, so it's nice to have it behind us, congratulations, thank you, everybody that worked on this. So moving along to item number 17 because we already took care of item number 16. This is the time and place for a public hearing to adopt a resolution of necessity determining the public interest for the acquisition of property located at 2702 North Bristol. And so let me go ahead and see if there's any, if there's a presentation from staff.
Honorable Mayor, Council, we do not have a presentation for this item, it is merely an adoption of a resolution, but staff is available to answer any questions.
Excellent, thank you, I'm gonna go ahead and formally open the public hearing and ask the clerk if there's any members of the public online or in person that wish to address us.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, we didn't receive any written communication, we didn't receive any in-person requesting to speak, but we do have one virtually who's participating and would like to provide a comment.
Great, go ahead.
Zoom ID Mark Rosen, if you would please, it looks like you've unmuted yourself, you may proceed with your comment.
Thank you. I submitted a letter to, my name is Mark Rosen, I'm the attorney for the property owner, which is Metrostar. And Metrostar is not a big corporation, it's basically one man, Cyrus Jazamazay, who has been active in the city for a while, at one point he owned Caldwell's Towing on Hester. And this property is the northwest corner of Bristol in Memory Lane. It's been vacant for as long as I can remember. It's probably best known for all the signs, political signs to get hung on the chain link fence in the election season. But he's been trying to develop this property for many years and the problem is it's too small to be developed. So he has approached people to try to get developers and more recently, when they see that the city is hoping to take the perimeter of the property, which would make it even smaller, he's been unable to get anybody who will commit to the property. So he decided to try to put up a spec building on his own rather than, without having a tenant lined up first. Now we had to, because of time limits, we had to file, and our view is if you take the perimeter property and don't allow for variances as to parking and as to setbacks, the property can't be developed and it's worthless. And the taking of the perimeter would essentially mean taking the entire property. So we filed, in order to not let some deadlines run out, we filed an inverse condemnation action. We then got together with the city, we have submitted applications to develop it with the variance and with, we've been negotiating that and processing these plans. And we actually went to court and the court agreed to stay the action pending resolution of the submittals. So I was kind of surprised to see the city go ahead with this resolution to take the property irregardless of the fact that we had stipulated to basically freeze the inverse condemnation action. I did submit a letter, should be part of your packet, I wrote a letter dated January 19th, which you should all have. So what I'm asking is to allow the development process to proceed and postpone this action until June when the stay of the inverse condemnation lawsuit ends and allow us to go through the whole city process to develop it with variances until then so we can avoid the need for additional litigation, additional court work.
Madam Clerk, I think that's three minutes. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, was that, was that our only speaker? Got it, let me go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for any questions or comments. And this is just, for clarity, this is just a, an RON, right?
This is adopting the resolution of necessity, so it's not a taking of the property and staff will continue to work with the property owner as they have been over the past over a year.
Got it. Well, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Yep, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Great, we have a motion and a second, seeing no other questions or comments, council members, please vote.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes, my vote is a yes vote.
Thank you. Okay, motion passes with Councilmembers Hernandez, Mendoza, Penylosa, Fan, Mayor Potembe Sera and Mayor Sarmiento voting yes and Councilmember Lopez voting no.
Great, thank you, moving along to item number 18, this is the final public hearing, this is to adopt a resolution approving a study of mitigated negative declaration for the Washington Avenue well project. And let me go ahead and ask Madam City Manager if there's a presentation.
We do have a very brief one, the Washington Avenue well is in the design stages, but we did receive a few questions of what is it and what it's gonna look like, so our executive director of Public Works will walk you through a brief presentation.
Gonna do a rapid fire presentation, I guess.
Good evening, just a brief update on this request to approve a CEQA document for the Washington well, proposed well. Tonight's action is to hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the following. Initial study and mitigated negative declaration document in accordance to the California CEQA Act or California Environmental Quality Act and adopt a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the same. The project basically is, we propose to drill a well on this east side, East Washington Avenue and Pennway. It's a lot that the city water department owns, it includes the construction of a groundwater well, well building, a well resources material storage facility, the drilling of the groundwater well with a capacity of between 2,500 to 3,000 gallons per minute capacity. The well will improve the pressure and reliability of the water system in the zone. It's right next to the elevated tank. Next steps in the project is well drilling. We have, we will complete plans and specification for the phase one of the drilling of the well and then award the contract for the same phase to drill the well. Phase two includes a development of the site, we would prepare plans, specifications and construction of the phase two site development, which includes well building, chemical building and storage material facility and award the construction for the site development. This is a, an aerial of the site, as you can see, it is on Pennway and Washington Avenue. This is a view of the existing open site that the water department manages right now. This is how would the site look like when it's developed, this is the wellhouse along with storage, material storage area in the back. And high level picture of the same. And I'm open for questions.
Great, thank you for that brief presentation and let me go ahead and formally open up the public, public hearing and see if there are any members of the public that wish to address us.
We didn't get any in person, no written communications and none virtual.
Great, so let me go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the city council, see if they have any questions or comments or move the item. Go ahead, Mayor Potembe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mabeel?
Yes.
Go ahead. Yes, so looking at that, I like what I see. One thing I just wanna bring up and maybe just kind of bounce off you and my colleagues, but that corner is such a very prominent corner. And, and so I like what I see there if that was a property that wasn't in such high view because I think you have a lot of traffic that goes up and down Pennway and along Washington there and it just seems like a good opportunity for public art. I mean, it looks like a place where you could put something and I, from looking at the plans and then looking at the zoning, I think you guys are obligated to have a 10-foot setback a lot between the back of sidewalk and the, and the fence in there, which my concern, of course, is with landscaping, my hope is that it doesn't become something where it just, you know, folks are camping out, literally. So that's, that's a concern, but obviously with staff on site, I'm sure that that won't be the issue, but is there a way that we can take a look at that corner to, you know, not necessarily just dress it up with landscaping and call it a day, but maybe take advantage of that location? It's right across from the Logan neighborhood, I just, I feel like there's, there's more opportunity there with that corner and given that we have the setbacks of what you guys are gonna be doing there, maybe there's more that can be done? I don't know if you can answer that?
Absolutely, I, I think what we'll do, when, when we get to the design phase, we would reach out to the Logan neighborhood and Neighborhood Association and meet with them and see if there's opportunities for public art on these walls, if that's what you're asking me to do. That is always an option, absolutely.
Well, you know, I mean, we just had a gentleman who did the artwork over there, over on Willetson Sullivan. And, and I mean, talk about taking advantage of an area that wasn't maintained, not to say that this won't be maintained, but it's just such an opportune spot. In fact, what I would ask you to do, and I know this is an extra step in the process, but I would like you to proceed with the project, but just to carve out that corner and maybe go back to our arts commission and look at something that we can do there, just on that corner, I don't wanna interrupt the project itself or what you're doing along the sides, along Washington and Penn, but I think that corner is something that we should try to do something a little more imaginative, a little more transformative with. And so I would be supportive of the project as is, but I'd like to refer just that aspect, the corner, to our arts commission for them to see if they can do. So that's a motion.
Got it.
Second.
Is there a second? Great, thank you, Councilmember Penylosa.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento, and just, Mayor Potembe Sera took the words right out of my mouth. In that concept design, I saw a lot of bushes, bushes that grow and that I already could, the last thing the Logan neighborhood sees is people living in the bushes in that area, so wherever we could make it easy, work with the Arts and Culture Commission to work on installing some really nice permanent art fixtures in that area, very supportive of that, that is it, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, any other questions or comments from the council? This is, is this Councilmember Hernandez's word, is he good?
Yes.
Are you good, Councilmember?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you, so we have a motion and a second, great comments, I think anything Mabeel you could do to just put the city seal on things and, you know, kind of dress things up whenever you can and things don't look so, you know, harsh and, you know, it softens, it softens things up, so completely supportive. Councilmembers, please vote.
Madam City Clerk, to avoid any potential issues with the technology, I'm gonna cast my vote verbally, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Motion passes with Councilmembers Hernandez, Lopez, Mendoza, Penylosa, Fan, Mayor Potembe Sera and Mayor Sarmiento voting yes.
Great, thank you, everybody, let's go ahead and recess the city council meeting and convene the housing authority meeting and we, we'll go ahead and ask the clerk to call roll.
Authority Member Hernandez?
Present.
Authority Member Lopez?
Here.
Authority Member Mendoza?
Present.
Authority Member Penylosa?
Here.
Authority Member Fan?
Here.
Vice Chair Basara?
Here.
And Chair Sarmiento.
Here, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to move the consent calendar items. A motion to approve. We have a motion from Mendoza, a second from Penylosa, councilmembers, please vote.
Madam City Clerk, my vote is yes.
Hear that?
Yes, and a second from Penylosa.
Motion by Mendoza, second by Penylosa and I heard a yes by Councilmember Hernandez. Everybody else, we can vote here.
Motion passes 7-0 with Authority Members Hernandez, Lopez, Mendoza, Fan, Penylosa, Vice Chair Basara and Chair Sarmiento voting yes.
Thank you, everybody, I keep looking at that clock and I'm thinking, man, we are making great time, it's only 4:15, so, you know. I know, man, we gotta put batteries in that, in that clock, it's getting my hopes up. But thank you, everybody, we're getting punchy a little bit, so we're almost done, we're here at item number 19 and that's the item that the moms wanted to listen to and it's a council-led item and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Mendoza and Lopez to talk about the firearm safe storage ordinance.
Sure, Councilmember Mendoza, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Thank you, so I just wanna thank Moms to Man Action for being here and for waiting till 10:00 to hear what the council members, their opinions on this, and so I am grateful for the work that you do. I know that many of the advocates are survivors themselves, so thank you for everything. And so, you know, I think we all know that unsecured guns increase the likelihood of violence through the risk of gun theft and guns are stolen on a yearly basis and now with the spike And now with the spike of, of property crime that we're seeing in different communities for various reasons, I would not be surprised if guns are one of the things that are being stolen from cars and from the homes. And so access to unfire, to unsecure firearms, it just contributes to the gun violence that we see in our communities among teens and children. And, you know, go, doing some of the research for this, I know that a lot of cities in California have something similar to an ordinance. Some of them very specific, where they only ban ghost guns. Some of them are resolutions. And so every, it depends on the type of ordinance or legislation that a city wants to see be implemented. And one of the things that we have discussed previously that I agree with is, you know, the city of Santa Ana having different codes in place but not having the mechanism to enforce the laws that we want to bring forth. And so I don't want to just pass laws to pass laws. I want to make sure that we're being very intentional and that we have the resources to support the things that we're doing. And so we just established a Public Safety Committee not too long ago, and the ask here for the colleagues today is to help me advance this to the Public Safety Committee so that they can really help us do the research and talk to the different groups involved and advise this council and bring something back so that the council can essentially have, you know, some, a public vote and some sort of opportunity for folks to come back and express their opinions and their concerns or support for the item. Councilmember Mendoza?
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez. And thank you to the ladies in red. Great, great to see you here. I am always an advocate for public safety. And so if this issue, when Councilmember Lopez brought this to me, I was very gung-ho because whatever we can do as, as city leaders to prevent more deaths by way of guns, I am in favor. So I would like to have staff do some more research and bring that back to us so we can do something to keep our youth safe. There has been, in my opinion, a lot of crime here in the city of Santa Ana, and it seems to be increasing with guns. So I hear reports of, I mean, I hear the shooting actually, you know. And so it's, it's heartbreaking to think that at that moment, another person is, has, has died or is going to be injured, permanently injured for life. And so if locking up these guns is going to be one way to show support for my colleague and for you as an organization, I will definitely advocate that our staff keep, bring that back with further information so that we can have more detailed conversation with our colleagues.
Thank you both for introducing this item. Let me go ahead and bring it back to the council for any comments and direction for the city manager. Councilmember Peñalosa?
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. Thank you to both my colleagues for bringing this forward. Definitely supportive of seeing something come back to the Public Safety Committee, whether it's an ordinance or a, or a public safety campaign, awareness campaign that we could put out there to our residents. Still trying to weigh out, I think that'd be best suited for the Public Safety Committee is to weigh out the differences between an ordinance and maybe a resolution or a public safety awareness campaign, just because I know Councilmember Lopez mentioned that of the idea of passing laws just to pass laws always kind of, you know, makes me think a little bit in, in ways of, you know, how, how can our police department possibly or code enforcement enforce this? You know, going into people's homes and, and I just don't see that. I'd like to see how that would look. But I am, you know, I appreciate both of them for, for trying to think of ways where we could continue to keep our residents safe. I just, you know, keep thinking of, of the numerous emails that I get from PD, daily almost it seems, of, you know, firearm violations and former significant events. And regardless, whatever law ordinance we pass or public awareness campaign, we're still going to have all the active gangs that are very active in the city still keep their loaded gun on the center console of their car, in their waistband, on the floor of the passenger seat. I mean, I read it weekly. Those people will not, you know, follow any of ordinance that we bring forward. I mean, the, the criminals are still going to break the law and participate in criminal activity. But happy to see this come back to the Public Safety Committee to see what we could put together. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Fan?
Thank you. I do agree in part with Councilmember Peñalosa and appreciate you two bringing this forward because I would like to see it at the Public Safety Committee. I think that's the best place for them to kind of hash out what the provisions would look like. I am supportive of an ordinance. A gun is a powerful tool as well as a powerful weapon. And if you're unable to securely store it and follow the regulations and laws that are relating to that tool, then you should not be using it. Additionally, I'd like to see how safe storage would be addressed when someone is transporting a gun. Imagine, you know, if I'm going to the gun range, obviously I have to bring my gun with me, what that would look like, how that would be, because there would be a difference, right? Someone storing it in their center console loaded, et cetera. I would like to see that. One comment I do want to make, though, is with all laws that are passed, there's always going to be people who break it intentionally or unintentionally. I don't think that prevents us from passing laws to ensure that we can enforce. One thing I do just want to briefly mention is that in some cases, you know, someone can be doing a welfare check and see that a gun is not properly stored or something might be related to an incident of a domestic abuse. Sometimes that can be a, how do I say this? A basis for criminalizing someone who may not otherwise be criminalized. I'm just putting it out there. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I just want us to take into account all different areas, all different aspects of something like this. Often, as far as I'm, I understand, the way these types of gun storage ordinances are enforced is when the officer does come to the house, you know, searches a vehicle and find them, and it's an additional charge of some sort in relation to all the other charges that might apply. With that, I would like to see it come back in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let me go to Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. I just want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Lopez and Councilmember Mendoza for bringing this forward. I support seeing a firearm safe storage ordinance. I, I do think that it's good practice for us as a city to reinforce safety and ensuring that if you do own a firearm, that we are taking every measure possible to ensure that it is safely stored. So yes, I would like to see staff bring back a policy that, that is rooted in equity and safety. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to see this item go to the Public Safety Committee. I would like, you know, I appreciate the sentiment of what, what this is trying to accomplish. I'd like staff to come back with information just to show the practicality of how it would be applied and how it would be enforced and what a possible ordinance could look like as far as components. So I think what my colleagues have already said as far as the path to getting this done, I'd like to see it go through Public Safety. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for those comments. I think everybody's had a chance to speak on this. All I would say is thank you to the moms for coming here and spending their evening with us and, and sharing their stories. I am very, very supportive of this item. You know, unfortunately, you know, guns, you know, have played a very tragic role in, in my life. You know, I lost a brother-in-law to it and, you know, have lost other family members and others have been impacted, so I feel your loss as well and your, your concern. You know, one of the things I would say is that despite what happens at the Public Safety Committee, I want it to come back to council. That's what I would say, you know. So if, you know, there's some vetting there, there's some discussion, that's great, but it should come back to the council in whatever form, whether it's, you know, with a recommendation or whether it's adjusted, whether it's a resolution or an ordinance, something that, you know, you know, we can decide on as a, as a, as a council body. One of the things that was interesting is that, you know, a colleague of mine, council, or excuse me, Mayor Sam Licardo in San Jose, just had his council pass what's, an ordinance that obligates any gun owner to carry liability insurance. It's the most expansive in the country. And the reason why is that, you know, the Bay Area, up in his city, they had the largest mass shooting, you know, in the state last summer. So, you know, I feel his pain and the loss of his residents. A, a lot of those were, you know, families and members of labor. And so, you know, it was a very tragic loss for him and his, and his city, and I felt it. And when he, you know, adopted this, it made me think to the extent that, yeah, we're not, you know, we're not going to take anybody's Second Amendment rights, but that doesn't mean we can't limit those weapons from being out in circulation. And that's really the goal, in my opinion, is, you know, the more we allow these items to be out there, yeah, people are going to abuse it, but if there's less guns out there, there's less opportunity for harm and tragedies that we've all suffered. So in any event, that, those are my comments. I think everybody's had a chance to speak on this, and let me go ahead and thank everybody for coming and speaking on this item. Let me go ahead and move along to item number 20, which is Councilmember Fan's item, and that is to discuss, review, and amendments, possible amendments to the City Council recognition policy.
Thank you, Mayor. And this is just kind of cleanup with some other stuff that's updated with the Sunshine Ordinance. A couple of things. One, it wasn't clear to me as a new council member that we could actually issue proclamations as proclamations without having to select any specific entity or individual to receive it. It was weird to me when I first came to Santa Ana that that I thought was a requirement because no other cities have that requirement. So clarification, we don't actually have to do that. But the other issues I want to update is, for example, the resolution states that we should be contacting the city manager's office seven days in advance of a council meeting. However, now that our agenda is being published seven days in advance, we should update that to at least 14 to give staff the opportunity to vet, look at, and also, you know, make the agenda item. The other issue is regarding certificates and other things regarding recognitions. I know that typically the certs have signatures for all the council members. I'm sure there are times when certification, or certificates of recognition are being presented to folks that have no idea who they are, and that's fine, but I think we should also allow individual council members to issue that cert. And as well as actually talk to staff and see if there's anything that you think might need updating from your perspective and your point of view with our recognition policy that might be outdated or just not useful. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Fan. Any questions or comments? Additional direction, Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fan. I don't think I caught the first portion of, of when you were explaining about the recognitions. To be honest, I, I was a little lost.
Yeah, so typically when we say, I declare, you know, February 1st Lunar New Year. And every city I've ever seen, the city council just declares it and has a proclamation. And that's it. Santa Ana is the only city that I knew of that I thought required that we have to issue the proclamation to an individual or an organization. It turns out my interpretation was wrong, so we don't have to update that language. According to the current resolution, you can issue a proclamation just as a proclamation without having to present it to anyone.
Oh, without having to give it to a specific org or person?
Exactly.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. And then, so yeah, supportive of that, of course. I, I didn't even think about that. And then the second item was when we're doing certificate of recommendation of, of, when we're doing the certificates, do we, do, do we not have the ability now to just include like a specific council member's name? Is that, was that the second part of your question?
So I was told that typically the certs have all of our signatures attached to.
Because I've seen some certificates that only have one or two.
So that's not technically officially in the policy?
Okay. So technically, you're requesting you add that language into the, okay, yeah.
Any other comments? Councilmember Peñalosa?
Yeah, just wanted to echo and voice my support for both my colleagues, to see something come back and to see what, because I also, I know we visited this once, and I also was a little confused. I remember it was one of the, I forget what it was. It was like National, you know, something week. And I wanted to recognize it, and then I was told to bring in an organization to recognize it too. So I always thought that was a little weird. So happy to see this come forward. Just wanted to voice my support.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Fan, for bringing this forward. It's always good to update our practices, and this is another example of that. So I'm supportive of the effort. Thank you.
Great. Seeing no other, hearing no other comments, I'm supportive as well. So we'll go ahead and bring it back. I think we only have one more item left, which is item number 21. That's Mayor Protem's item to consider the support of Assembly Bill AB 485.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Santa Ana is one of the very few cities that actually posts monthly reports of hate crime-related data. And that is because back in April of 2021, Councilmember Fan and I brought forth a council member requested item asking for our police department to post monthly reports of hate crime-related data on the PD's website. Then, as it is now, law enforcement agencies are only required to post that information annually, and that's to the Department of Justice. And I think with what we've seen out there and rise in hate crimes, especially to the AAPI community, I think it's important that we see this data posted more frequently. And I'm very proud that our PD was very cooperative in doing that, and they have up-to-date data on their website today. But the fact that other agencies only post it annually is ridiculous. So Assembly Bill 485 actually would require law enforcement agencies up and down the state to post this data monthly on their own websites. The great thing about this is that it's received enormous bipartisan support. It's sailed through the Assembly and the various committees, and I believe now it's in the Senate. And, you know, 64 to 0 vote is very impressive. Obviously, this is something that crosses all party lines to advocate for. And so I wanted our council to be inclusive and supportive of such a resolution and so, or of, of such an assembly bill, excuse me. And so my hope was that my colleagues would agree to adopt a resolution in support of Assembly Bill 485.
Great. Thank you for that. Let me go ahead and bring it back to the council, see if there's any guidance. Go ahead, Councilmember Lopez.
I'm definitely supportive, but I do wonder if maybe the Legislative Committee or the Standing Meeting can take a look at it just so that we understand thoroughly what 485 states. That would be okay with you?
Actually, I think it's time-sensitive, and the fact is, if you take a read of the bill, it's lightning quick. It's probably two sentences' worth of a bill. So I, I think it's something that could easily be digested in a very short read, but it just simply is asking for law enforcement agencies to post the data monthly. There's no other caveats to it.
I'm supportive of this item. I think it's just a continuation of what we're trying to do here in the city, which is to be transparent with our data. And frankly, I think it also helps validate some of the actions that our police department are trying to work on regarding transparency as well as community policing and addressing issues that residents have raised. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments or, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. I just wanted to keep my comments brief and say that I support this council member requested item by Councilmember Basera, and I'd like to see it move forward.
Great. Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Peñalosa?
Just wanted to voice my support for this resolution.
Dito and supportive. Thank you.
Great. I'm supportive as well. I, I do agree. I, I think, you know, we, we need to come up with some sort of protocol where it goes back to committee, and I think, you know, if it can, you know, it'd be great for us to go ahead and speak with the author, see what else we can do. I know that we also have worked with Attorney General Bonta on a roundtable that we hosted here in Santa Ana and would like to get his opinion as well. But, you know, generally supportive of, of obviously bringing it back. So thanks, everybody. Let's go ahead and move along to city manager comments.
Only comment is just happy Lunar New Year. I'm not a year of the tiger, I'm a year of the snake.
Oh, man. All right. That's, I won't say TMI, but, you know, now we know. Thank you, thank you, city manager. Let me go ahead and start with the council members. Councilmember Hernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want to thank our residents and, and staff that assisted us with this council meeting today, and for everybody that took time out of their day and their night to, to stay with us here. Thank you. I want to wish our community a happy Lunar New Year. I also want to celebrate today being the first day of Black of Black History Month. Santa Ana is the heart of Black Orange County. In the early 60s, there was a strong black presence here in the city of Santa Ana. Proud to represent the largest demographic of a black community as a council member in Ward 5. In Ward 5, there's a special history there. The current oldest black American that we have in Orange County is in Ward 5. His name is Mr. Warren Bussey. He recently celebrated 108 years of, of, of life and history. We also want to shed light and celebrate Helen Ship, the, the founder of the Black History Parade, which is taking place this Saturday in the city of Anaheim. The Black History Parade was originally a Santa Ana celebration that started off humble with eight people off of Willets. It slowly evolved into what it is today, where there are thousands of participants in this parade. It is my aspirations and goal to see this parade be brought back to its home here in the city of Santa Ana. Myself and Mayor Sarmiento will be standing in solidarity with the community this Saturday, along with Councilmember Lopez. Happy Black History Month.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let me go to Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. So happy Lunar Year, everyone. There's going to be a couple of events happening this Saturday. It's a very popular date. I will be in Anaheim supporting the Black History Parade and I will try to also make it to the Tep Parade because I've never been to one and I've heard they're really awesome. So I encourage Santa Ana residents to pick an event and go and support. I also want to thank staff for working with me and UAB Foundation where we teamed up to bring free COVID testing to Ward 3 residents in the Prentice Park area at the Santa Ana Zoo. And so if you know of anyone, please help us spread the word. It is verified. And, you know, I do want to quickly address, I didn't get to make my comments when we were talking about the homelessness update. So I want to thank staff. One of the first requests that I had last year was essentially working with these multi-agencies. And I know it takes time to put these cleanups together, but I want to thank staff for all the work that they did and City Manager's Office and Sergeant Montiel for helping to bring everyone together. And, you know, regarding East First Street, this is something that Christine and I, our city manager, and I continue to talk about. We know it's been an ongoing issue and there are options that we are discussing. We are moving forward. Fortunately, we have a new supervisor that is a lot more amenable to working with us and understands that Santa Ana also has to be a priority. And so we are hopeful that residents, you know, are going to see changes in the years to come. And, you know, I also want to let the businesses of East First Street know that you have to be a good partner with the city. Because if you are not and you are not working with us in good faith, we will use all of the options available to us to ensure that, you know, we don't, that we exercise all of the options that we have. That's all I'm going to say. And so, you know, happy Lunar New Year, as I said, and happy Black History Month. I hope everyone has a good weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Let me go to Councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you. I'd like to inform the public that we have a lot of parks, so please come out and use them. This, just a few days ago, we had the grand opening over at Thornton Park in Councilmember Vessara's, excuse me, in Mayor Protem's ward. And these exercise areas are going to be put in many, many of the parks in the area. So please get out there and use them. They're, they're there for, for you exclusively. Keep yourself healthy and safe. And happy Lunar, Lunar Year to everyone. And we probably won't be meeting before Valentine's, so enjoy the Friendship Week and good night.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Fan?
You went out of order, so I got all flustered.
Everybody, I know, I'm not bouncing around. I'm just following the script. So I think we've got to get used to this.
You need to update the script, alphabetical. Anyway, hi, everyone. Of course, again, I want to wish everyone a chúc một năm mới. It's, it's, I, I'm so proud, excited and honored to have been able to wish all of you from this dais a happy Lunar New Year and happy Thet. It is the most important holiday in Vietnamese culture. It's birthday, it's New Year, it's spring, it's, all the holidays wrapped up into one and it really focuses on family. It focuses on gathering together and it focuses on hope for a better and brighter New Year. I want to encourage all of those who can't make it to the Thet Parade. I understand, you know, unfortunately, they did fall on the same day. I will be at the Thet Parade, but you can also visit the UVSA Thet Festival and it will be running both Saturday and Sunday. It's going to be super fun. It's $8 to get in. It's like a county fair. It's Vietnamese food, culture, eating competitions, dancing, performances, all the things. And I think it's really important for our community here in Santa Ana, whatever background you're from, to, to go visit. I think in this time of anti-Asian hate, it's really important for all of us to expose ourselves to cultures that are different from ours, to get to know one another and to really experience what it's like to be a part of a community that isn't yours. Finally, I do want to say that, you know, this year has been really difficult for all of us, but it's really important that we keep, I think, hoping and, and hoping for a brighter 2022. I think that's what the Year of the Tiger is about. I am born in the Year of the Cat, also known as Year of the Hair, if you're Chinese. But it's really about being brave. So I really want to challenge everyone out there to really think about that and to be brave in everything that you do, because I think that keeps with the spirit. So again, chúc một năm mới.
Great, thank you, Councilmember Fan. Councilmember Penyalosa?
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Lunar New Year, chúc một năm mới, and that is it. Good night.
Thank you for those comments. Mayor Protem Vessara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce that for this month, my monthly community office hours will take place on Saturday, February 19th at 10:00 a.m. and not on February 5th. As my colleagues have talked about already, I will be at the Tep Parade celebrating the Lunar New Year. As part of my AB, I forget which Assembly Bill. This is the, my disclosure for attending events on behalf of the city. I attended the annual UCLA Land Use Law and Planning Conference on behalf of our city. Despite my reluctance to admit that I went to anything UCLA or supportive of UCLA, I will admit that it was actually a good event. And, and to be honest, it, it annually is a great event. It, it provides some good updates on legislation and, and some land use law, some of the cases that come out. So it, it really is a good event. I wish it was in person, but unfortunately it was not. It was virtually, but it was still a great event. And other than that, I just wanted to conclude my remarks tonight by wishing those who are welcoming in the Year of the Tiger a very happy and prosperous New Year and chúc một năm mới.
Great, thank you for those comments. All I can say is UCLA is the number one public university in the country. So go Bruins. In any event, I, I, look, it's, it's a healthy rivalry, but we are ranked number three in basketball, so I won't rub that into my Trojan friends. But, I know, but I, I did want to just say, man of city manager to your team and especially, you know, a special shout out to Daisy Perez, Paul Ekins and Rosa Flores. Really, an, an amazing job with the state of the city and to my colleagues up here who participated. I, you know, I heard nothing but positive comments. And, you know, when Sonya and I kind of bumped into each other, we've been to quite a few of these. We just said, you know, we wanted to make it different. So, you know, I hope it was as pleasant for you as it was for, for others who attended. We wanted to have a departure from what we've lived through in the past two years and previous to something different, which is, you know, a much more hopeful moment. So with that, I do want to wish everybody a happy Lunar New Year, chúc một năm mới. I'm really, really bummed out that both parades, the Black History Parade and the Thet is on the same day because I haven't missed a Thet Parade in a very long time. We need to work with both those groups to see how we can figure out, you know, to make sure that they don't do that because we, you know, we certainly want to attend both of those. But look, well, you know, that, that'll be a work in progress. But to everybody else, happy Black History Parade, happy Black History Month, and I wish everybody a good night. We're adjourned until February 18th. Good night, everybody.